One minute.
The meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for April ninth, two thousand twenty-five will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was, one, published to the Courier-News, two, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, three, posted to the municipal website, and four, given to the clerk administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that a board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aitkins is excused. Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kroska.
Here.
John Manilio is also excused. Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember of room.
Here.
Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for approval for minutes from regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Can we do both resolutions at the same time, or do we have to say, I think we should separate?
I think we should separate. I don't know if we can, everyone can vote on it.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I answered my question, that's how you answer it. Motion to approve resolution for Ronaldo Partners LLC, forty-four, four forty-four Catherine Street.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, who was motion?
Right. I believe so, yes. Andrea Dare. Chris Addicks. Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
I'm ineligible.
Oh, my bad. Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. And then a motion for resolution for the Foundry Urban Renewal LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
No.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. I'm gonna turn it over to our board attorney, Kara.
Okay, there has been a issue.
Can you just turn your mic on?
Okay, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. We have a hearing this evening in connection with Avalon Somerville Station Urban Renewal LLC. There has been some dialogue and documentation submitted in connection with the issue of EV parking stations, and there have been some dialogue of potential litigation as a result of a decision that could be made by this board at the conclusion of a hearing, so I would like to go into executive session under subsection seven of the Open Public Meetings Act to discuss the, that potential and the comments that were made prior to the continuation of the application.
If I may, Michael Bruno here on behalf of Avalon. We object to you going into executive session. We'd like any, any debate about this application done in the public forum. With that said.
Thank you, and certainly we will return and have any of that debate. I would just like to advise them on what has been stated and the issues that have happened up until this point, and then we'll return to continue the hearing.
Our objection's on the record.
Thank you.
Motion to go in.
Yep, so that, we would be going, as I indicated, under subsection seven in connection with that issue. We will, of course, be returning to the public. There will be no formal action taken during executive session, and all deliberations and action will be taken when we return to the dais.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes.
As a reminder, the cameras and audio recording is still live out here, so I just want everybody to keep that in mind while you're out here. You are being recorded and streaming live on television, or YouTube.
If everybody can turn off their mics before going in, please, thank you.
Good evening. Michael Bruno again, Giordano Howland, Cecil here on behalf of Avalon Bay Communities. This is a continuation of the preliminary and final site plan application that was commenced before you in February two thousand twenty-five. The, the application was carried to this date. There were a number of conditions and professional review letters that were given at the last meeting. The plans have since been revised to address all of the items that we heard and the conditions, and so we believe the updated plans, which were submitted on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, are now compliant with all the requests of, of your professional team. One of the most significant issues that we've been working on is, is related to the safety of the EV charging. We heard, we heard your concerns about the safety, and tonight we're here to talk about the revised plans and what we've done to try to address those concerns. We have additional experts with us this evening that are experts in fire, fire safety. They will present detailed testimony. One of their reports was delivered to you as, as part of the record, and we'll introduce that shortly. But we've listened carefully to your, your concerns, and we've addressed your feedback, and at the same time, we're complying with New Jersey law, which has mandated the EV charging in this building. We're gonna walk through the plans in detail, incorporate, and tell you what we've done to incorporate your concerns. We respect the heightened concerns that you've had, and we're committed, Avalon is committed to addressing them head-on. That said, the concerns, while valid that you raised them, stand in direct tension with the mandated obligations of this board and the law of this state. As you know, and as I pointed out in my memo that was delivered on Monday, Monday, there's a legal mandate for this board to follow state law and require the EV charging stations as part of this development. It's not discretionary, it's an absolute mandatory obligation. We don't like it, you don't like it, but we're obligated to do it in accordance with the law. The other thing we want to really stress tonight is what the real risks are, or the lack thereof. Our rebuilt, our revised plans keep EV charging stations within the garage as mandated, because moving them outside isn't feasible. There's just no available land on or adjacent to the site. It's also, we're not permitted under the zoning or state rules, and crucially, it doesn't enhance safety. EVs will still park in the garage regardless, and the data is crystal clear that the charging act itself is not the dangerous item. It's also not dangerous to have EV cars. I mean, they, they, the likelihood of a fire from an EV is many, many multiples less than a gas vehicle. We recognize and we appreciate that those fires that do occur can be problematic. They get very hot, and they're hard to put out, but that doesn't change the law and the, and the remote likelihood that this may occur at this property. As noted, the fires stem from batteries and not the act of charging, and only in rare cases are they tied to out As noted, the fires stem from batteries and not the act of charging, and only in rare cases are they tied to outdated equipment or misuse, not cutting-edge design like we have here. You're going to hear from our architect as to what the changes are to the plan, as well as our EV engineer and fire protection specialists, who, who will detail how the revised plans, with a multiple-hour rating and advanced mitigation, virtually eliminates any risk from charging. Even with the remote chance of a fire, our design now ensures that there will no be, will be no catastrophic result as the, as the slab, as it is, 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 is designed to mitigate any, any damage from a fire. The revised plans now align with New Jersey law, exceed safety standards, and while we expect, respect your input, we're stuck with a law that requires us to put these charging stations in. So with that said, we, we do have one witness this evening, Carl Pankey, who has another meeting. He is our traffic engineer. We presented him directly at the last meeting, you had the opportunity to, to examine him. We did bring him back just in case you have some more traffic-related questions, and he's here, so if we could put him first for questions, he's begged me to let him get out of here for another meeting, and we want to accommodate him. So, any questions for Carl Pankey?
No.
Any questions from the public might have for him that we don't?
I'll open it to the public for questions quickly, just for traffic. Okay, hearing done.
Okay. Carl?
Good luck with the next one.
Our next, what I want to do next is I want, I want to put our architect down and go over the changes to the plans that we made to the building in direct response to the comments that we heard and the concerns that you've raised. Once we have the plans introduced and, and described, we'll then introduce Robert Solomon and Evan La Croix. They were with SLS, they're nationally recognized fire safety engineers and fire protection experts, and they're going to talk a little bit about the law that requires us to design this in a certain manner, and the, and the mitigation that exceeds the current law in an effort to try to address the concerns that we heard at this last meeting and that we've seen from your fire official. So if I could, Arthur Michaels, our engineer, you've previously been sworn and qualified.
Yes, I have.
Okay, great. The board's satisfied with, with the, with the last qualification, correct?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to mark those as we, as we enter into them.
Eight thirteen is the next one.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we mark these up front so we, we can have a smooth narrative here? What are we looking at, and let's mark them as you describe them?
The first one I'm going to mark is the garage level plan. It's sheet A two in the, the set that was submitted as a relies on, on March 21st, 25. And it's eight thirteen?
Correct.
And then the second one is the updated rendering, okay? And I'll mark that as eight fourteen.
Thirteen on that one?
No.
So there, those are the two exhibits you'll be referring to this evening?
I have others, but hopefully this will tell the story.
So we, we heard the comments and the concerns of the board at the last meeting.
Loud and clear.
And you spoke with your client, or the applicant?
Yep.
And what did they direct you to do, and what were you able to accomplish in response to those concerns?
They, they retained a fire consultant for us. We had consultations with them, we reviewed the design, and, and then we were, we were directed to upgrade the design to, to completely minimize the hazard to much as, as absolutely possible.
Okay, so can you go through the changes that you've come up with?
Sure. First, on the garage level plan, we've, we've located the EVs, well, before we even located the EV stations, the garage, as it was originally presented, met the requirements of an enclosed parking garage per the building code. So we went back, reanalyzed the garage, increased the size of the openings, and now this, this garage is fully compliant with the requirements of an open parking structure, or open parking garage per the International Building Code. So it, it increased the ventilation area to the garage, the natural ventilation dramatically.
And, and how does that help address some of the comments that we've heard? What's the, what's the benefit of that?
Certainly, it would, it would have heat be able to disperse, it would have smoke be able to disperse. You wouldn't have an enclosed garage, if there was a lot of smoke, it would build up. Here, you're allowing it to vent out naturally with convection more freely. We further located all the EV parking spots. We've located them right next to the large openings. We've also spread them out around the garage, and you'll notice that we've, we've, we've broken them up so that there'd be two spaces that are a foot apart, so we've separated them a little further, and then put a, a non-EV space in between them, thereby, by spreading the EV spaces around. We maximize the ones along the back.
What's the benefit of spreading them as you, as you go through that?
That, that, you know, they're not right next to each other, and it, when you minimize the risk of the fire jumping from, from EV vehicle to EV vehicle.
Okay.
Okay. We also, you'll notice how we positioned them here, we tried to position them under the courtyards, you know, so to the extent that possible and still getting the, the, the number of spaces around, we've, we've located the EV spaces so they're below the courtyards, not below the residential buildings above, or, and then the couple of spots where they are located below the residential buildings above, the residential buildings above are set back to some degree, you know, so they're not right on that face. The next thing that we did is that we located fire stand pipes that would be within 50 feet of the vehicles. You'll notice these gray shaded areas that I have is the 50-foot radius from the originating point of the stand pipe. We put the stand pipe on the opposite side of the drive aisle, so if a fireman had to go and connect up to the fire stand pipe, it wasn't right next to the vehicle. Then I showed the 50-foot radius going around, that it covers the, the EV vehicles, and then spaced them, spaced them all around. Then the third thing that we did is that we've located places to store the EV blankets, the blankets for the vehicles. We've located.
Which was another request.
Which was another request. But by the, you know, by the town at one point, but also by our fire consultants. And we've located four of those. One of them is by the back exit door over here on the right side. Another one is by, by this maintenance door, by a back exit over here on the left side. We have one in the front that's close to the EV vehicles in the corner here, that's close to the lobby entrance and so on. And then we got another one that's right adjacent to the driveway as you're coming in. Furthermore, with conversations with the fire department, we have two doors to the garage, overhead doors that are operated by sirens, you know, so that those would automatically open, you know, if they had to go and get in. And they are also interconnected with the fire alarm, so that in, and that was a request at our meeting, that if there was a fire alarm or the sprinklers went off, that the overhead garage doors immediately went open, and there would be easy access or easy for people to go and get out of the garage.
Okay. Any other changes to the plan that you made in response to the comments that we've received from the board professionals or the board?
Yeah, there's a number. We, we've, we've located on the plans the generator, we located the screening on the generator and the courtyard in the back, the larger courtyard, show a 10-foot screen, a nine-foot-high screen wall wrapping around it. If you want, I can pull up those plans, but, but it's, it's on there. The fire department had also requested roof access, and I believe in their, their latest letter, they acknowledged that we provided that, and it's, it's actually shown on the rendering in the upper right-hand corner over the lobby, there's one on that side, one on the other. We made it look like a dormer, so it integrated with the design of the building, okay? And then we memorialized all, all the things that we talked about last time with some eight-foot-six spaces to get access to the mechanical rooms and so on. And then the final thing is the fire department wanted to the two courtyards up on the second floor, they wanted to have access from the inside of the building, and we are agreeable to do that. We're going to, there's, there's, on each side, there's a one-bedroom unit that I can tighten up a little, and I can make a corridor that's, that's an emergency access there for, for access back to those.
Other than that, which you're agreeable to doing on behalf of the applicant, we've addressed all of the other design comments that?
To my knowledge, we have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to offer?
No, I think that that's, that's it.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions, yeah. The, one of the reports we have here talks about different types of mitigating circumstances. Are there going to be additional stand pipes or additional water pipes?
Which report are you referring to?
There's a report here that says classification of modern vehicles are what?
That was a, that was an exhibit to your fire official's letter of Friday, April 4th.
So this was sent to our fire official last week, and then, what I, the first thing I note is that it starts on page 33, with one, incident number three, but where's incident number two? Where's incident number one?
We didn't send that, that's, that, that was, that was prepared by your fire marshal, not by us, but we will, we will be addressing the additional mitigation with our next witnesses.
As far as the stand pipes, there are numerous other standpoint, pipes that are required by code, there are ones at the stairways, there are access points.
Extra ones?
We're doing all those, plus, all these ones in gray are extra ones that we're providing for the EV. All these are not envisioned anywhere in the code, they're all, that's all over and above the code that we're doing as mitigation to, to, to make it a safer building and make it a, a, a better position for the fire department when they have to be in there, and I think our experts are going to speak about that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Let's, let's have a follow-up question, because obviously you've designed this now, and you've got a lot of experience in designing multifamily with parking.
Yes.
With EV charging. How do you, how do you consider this plan in terms of the upgrades and the mitigation that you've provided compared to other plans that have been lawfully adopted?
We've never come close to this level of mitigation. This, this one is by far way over and above, just the, the level of the sprinkler, you know, the sprinkler systems that we're putting in, the fact that we changed it to the open parking, the open parking garage, and in fact, even that, I exceed the requirements of openness, you know, where, you know, I didn't cut it to the last percent or whatever, where, where, you know, in the length of openings, I think I'm eight percent over what the requirement was, you know, or, or it's, it's quite 40, 40% is open, we're at 48% open, you know, as an example. You know, the, the blankets, you know, the alarm system, those are things that we don't, don't normally do, and, and quite frankly, the three-hour fire rating, and you're going to hear about that more, we went through the fire tests that our consultant did, and we, and we, they had a lot of consultation with our structural engineers to make sure that, you know, in the event that there was an incident, you know, that the building can sustain. And, and after this, I challenged them pretty hard every time we had meetings as well, because I knew it was coming my way, too. Yes.
What towns were, what town did you build a building with EVs in the parking deck? Their situation?
I've done them in, I've done them in Bloomfield, I've done them in Jersey's, Union City, I've done them in Livingston, Jersey City, we've done a number of ones in Jersey City.
The last four years?
What? Yes.
The last four years?
Yes. Every, every project, we have to do it now, you know, it's, it's, you know, you know, in the, in the last, you know, two and a half, three years, you know, we're being forced, we're being required to put them in all buildings.
Are those, are those residential buildings that you're referencing?
Yes, they're all residential buildings.
And they all have the residences above?
Yes.
The parking, the parking garage?
And some of them don't have the three-hour ratings that we have here.
All right, is it fair, fair to say that Avalon asked you to really dig in and find mitigation that you could add over and above what the code requires?
Very clearly. They're not shy.
Right.
Just a clarification question, if I could, you said three-hour rating, what does that apply to, just so I understand, I apologize if I missed it.
Three-hour rating? Yeah. So, so the building, the way this building is designed, the parking garage is designed to what they call construction class 1A. There's, construction classes go from one to five with A and B in them all. 1A is the highest rated construction class with the most, the highest rated firing ratings in it. This garage is 1A, so in 1A, you know, the podium slab that's picking up loads has to resist three, three-hour fire rating, you know, under certain test criteria, and the fire consultants can speak to you a little bit more about that.
All right, God, thank you, appreciate that.
As well as the other structural elements.
Do you know what temp?
Slabs, beams, and columns, and so on.
Do you know what temperature that's at?
I would defer to the experts.
Okay.
So, one more question, this is a clarification point, I think maybe the experts on that all have better answers. With the three-hour rating, if there's no concern with the structural of it, what was the reasoning that we wanted to move them underneath the empty areas if there was no concern about the structure in the residential above it?
Because I was told to be over and above and go crazy and make it as safe as possible perceived at every level, you know, and so my perception was that if, if someone had a concern to it, you'd be certainly less of a concern about something happened over a courtyard versus someone's apartment. So it was, it was an opportunity was here that was unique to this building, that there was a fairly good percentage of them that could be under a courtyard, so I, I took it on my own to locate them at that spot.
I, I don't think the board should take the mitigation that's been added as a concern that we had, that we had an unsafe building, building it to code. It is in direct response to the concern that you have, founded or unfounded, we respect what you, what you said, and we took it seriously and did everything that we could think of with the consultants that are experts in this field to try to address the concerns that you raised. Even though we don't believe they're warranted, we believe that the likelihood of a fire from a charger is virtually unexistent, right? If, if, if a charger's built to code, we believe that, and you'll hear from the experts, not from me, the lawyer, but we believe that we virtually decrease the chance of a fire happening from the charger next to zero. Fires can happen in the EV vehicles themselves. The batteries get damaged, there's some malfunctions, but it's very remote compared to what gasoline cars go on fire. The statistics that we found is there have been approximately 400 incidents in the last 15 years, there's nearly 40 million EVs on the road, and only 15% of those were related to charging at the time. And most, the vast majority of those, if not all of those, were as a result of antiquated equipment, people doctoring up the charger, using extension cords, overcharging, none of the protections that we have. We couldn't find any case where a charger is built to code that caused a fire. So we understand the concern, it's a grave concern, because these fires are hot, and they're hard to get out, and they're dangerous, but they're very remote, and we built in redundancy, and we built in protections in the, God forbid, scenario where one does happen, that it won't cause a catastrophic event for the building or cause injury or loss of life. We're going to talk about your EV firefighters and your, your firefighters and proper training, we're going to get that, to that in the end, what we're going to offer, but we're, we recognize the concern, and we're going to. But we're we recognize the concern, and we're going to hit it head-on and try to address it the best we can, and then some. So I just want to be clear, these are not because we're worried about a fire. These are because you guys are worried, and we have to satisfy you.
One, sorry, one one more question for clarification on a different item in there. It said that the parking deck is going to be license plate reader. That's how you guys are going to do the gates and everything. Is it going to be open to everybody in the entire development of Avalon or just people who live within that building?
Fair question.
I think, yeah, what was testified to was the residents of this building alone.
This building only, okay.
I think, you know, that's that's what I remember hearing last time. I think it's just been confirmed.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the architect? We also updated the site plan. Mario Iannelli is a civil engineer. He's here if you have any questions. I think it's rather straightforward, the site plan changes. We we got the letter from CHA. We addressed all the comments. We got the revised letter today. And there's a couple small technical comments he has in there. We're happy to address those also. I don't think they rise to the level of a continuing presentation because I think we've satisfied them. But he's here if you have any questions with respect to the changes that we made. And again, they were submitted back in March as a part of the amended submission, trying to address all of the conditions so we can hopefully get a preliminary final approval.
So just for the record, then, you're saying anything in his in CHA's report you're willing to comply, any of those minor?
That's correct. That's correct.
Do you want me to leave the exhibits up?
It was for now.
Anyone else wants them?
Yes. So next up, I want to I want to call up our consultants, Robert Solomon and Evan LaCroix, who are with SLS Socotech, a nationally recognized fire prevention engineering firm. I'm going to have both of them some more, and we'll get through the testimony and the presentation.
Can you bring your documents to the testimony you're about to give this board? We need to come home to this and nothing left.
I do, I do.
And and we do, I do believe the board has their CVs. I'd like to show the information on the records and certainly to get them qualified and anything which you have to do, but if you get them qualified, then you can.
Sure.
Can you turn your mic on for us, Kara?
Sorry.
Kara, you are you going to read those, or you want us to verbally?
Yeah, I think, does everybody have a copy of their CVs in front of them? Okay, it looks like they're all getting them. Why don't you go through qualifications? They have these, and if they have any questions, they can go from there.
Okay. Gentlemen, could you introduce yourself individually and and your credentials and your fire protection and life safety expertise?
Sure. Evan LaCroix, Fire Protection Engineer with SLS Consulting.
Red is on.
Oh, okay. Seven years of experience, been have my master's degree in fire protection engineering from Worcester Polytechnic Institute. I've been a professional engineer, licensed in several states for the last three and a half years, part of NFPA, SFPE, and ICC Building Plans Examiner for additional certifications.
Robert Solomon, I'm Chief Development Officer and a Principal Fire Protection Engineer at SLS. I'm a licensed fire protection engineer, have been so since nineteen eighty-five. My background is Bachelor of Science degree in Fire Protection Engineering from University of Maryland. Spent time working for the military in a civilian capacity. Spent thirty-four years working at the National Fire Protection Association, which is kind of the the center of a lot of these code provisions we'll be discussing this evening. And since twenty twenty, I have been with SLS Consulting. Some other activities, I teach an undergraduate program at WPI on fire protection engineering topics. I'm a member of the UL Fire Council and a member of NFPA Committee. After having managed them for many years, I'm now a member of of one of them. So that's a little bit about about my background.
Robert or Evan, could you could you describe your company and what your company does and where you do it?
Sure. So SLS Consulting is now part of a international consulting firm called Socotec. Headquarters for Socotec is in France, but we were acquired by them in twenty twenty-three. So our our work is actually international. It was international to some extent even before that acquisition. So our role is to work with everybody. We work with developers, we work with architects, we work with other engineers, we work with code officials, and we provide a variety of services, everything from developing code narratives for a project, what codes apply, what provisions are unique to that. So that's a main function of what we do. We also conduct due diligence studies for maybe building owners that are concerned about the efficiency and adequacy of their fire protection systems or maybe a property is for sale, and the potential owner wants to know, is this thing up to code? If it's not, what what are the expenditures that are going to be involved there? Another thing that we also do, we also do what's called third-party plan review, where we might be retained by a jurisdiction to supplement their own resources to do building plan review for building code and fire code-related issues. One of the ones that a number of us are working on for the past three years, it's actually the Tesla Gigafactory in Austin, Texas, where we do the third-party plan review for that facility where the Cybertruck is manufactured. So those are, I think those are the main things that we we get involved in. We do some litigation work as a result of fire losses or buildings that maybe were inadequately protected, and a new owner bought it without a due diligence study. So we also work on items like that as well.
Any questions of these experts?
I have a couple. And please excuse the questions. This is really just due to my complete lack of knowledge about what it is that you're doing. So the we'd be looking to qualify them as what would be the expert?
They're fire protection engineers and life safety experts.
Okay, is that a state-by-state license? Is that an international license? Is that a, just explain that to me a little bit.
Yeah, the licensing provisions, Evan said, he's a professional engineer. I'm a licensed professional engineer. So that is state-by-state for fire protection engineers. That is the exact same test. My license happens to be in California, but the same test that's given there is given in New Jersey or Massachusetts or Texas, if that if that helps.
Okay, yeah, it definitely does. So the testimony is that the you're not licensed, neither of you are licensed in New Jersey, but the test that you would pass for qualifications in the states you are licensed is, to the best of your knowledge, the same as what would be here?
Yes.
Do you have knowledge of the international, obviously, fire code? New Jersey building fire codes, to the extent that there's anything specific to the state?
Yes, the New Jersey codes are referred to as the Uniform Construction Codes, the UCC. The current edition is based on the twenty twenty-one edition of the International Building Code. The IVC is the model document that a lot of states will kind of start with, and then they can modify or amend that. We see fewer and fewer state amendments over the years, but the the New Jersey code is based on that twenty twenty-one edition, yes.
Okay, and then you said that you've given testimony in litigation, presumably before other boards as well?
The litigation experience I have is in depositions as a result of fire losses or copyright issues, things like that.
And any board testimony?
I I do not, no.
And then have you given testimony or opined as to this specific issue with regard to questions and concerns of EV vehicles in parking decks such as the one that's designed for the application?
I've I've given that in terms of what we what we do as part of our involvement on new building projects, we develop a code narrative. And the code narrative will address things like EV charging, if it's if there's going to be a public garage or a private garage, wherever the case might be. So to that extent, those tend to get covered in those code narratives that our company develops.
Okay, thank you.
I I have one question. Have you done any investigative work on EV fires?
I have not personally, no.
All right, I have a handful of questions I'm going to ask these gentlemen before we get into the exact changes and and rules that apply to this particular project. Just to set a foundation as to what we what you really have to examine in order to come up with the opinion you're you're going to be asked to make regarding the safety of this building. So exactly what laws and building codes govern the installation and operation of EV charging stations and parking garages in New Jersey? And how do they ensure safety?
I'll start with that. So as I mentioned, the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code, the UCC, is kind of the umbrella document for design of new buildings. It regulates specific requirements based upon the use, the occupancy, and it gets into things like building construction type. So we'll start with that. We heard from Arthur that this is a type one A building. Type one A is fire-resistant construction. There is no construction category that's higher than that. That's the same construction category that I would find up in Newark in a building that's forty stories in height. So type one A is the is a very conservative construction type. So that's one piece that the code addresses to help protect the building, the occupants, and to some extent, the first responders. And then we layer in other systems and features. We have building fire alarm systems, for example. We have automatic sprinkler systems, for example. Those are two very common systems that go into just about any building these days, regardless of its use or its function or its size. So we have systems like that. And then we also have other systems that the code, the New Jersey code regulates. And one of those supplemental codes that's a mandatory reference is the National Electrical Code, which is NFPA seventy. Again, New Jersey has, I think, a slightly different designation for it under the UCC banner. But the National Electrical Code regulates everything electrical that's in this room we're in right now, this microphone, even though it's low voltage, the lighting, the projection equipment. So the NEC is the governing document when it comes to many of these other mitigation features with regard to EVs. There's an entire section in the National Electrical Code that addresses EV charging stations specifically. And it takes everything from where that charging station is receiving its power from the utility, then the components of the charging station, including the connectors, the wiring, everything that goes from that charging station into the vehicle. What supplements that, then, is the other part of this kind of protection ecosystem from organizations like Underwriters Laboratories. UL is going to be plastered all over every piece of equipment that's associated with the charging station. UL has an entire ecosystem dedicated just to that. So one of the things that we rely on in these codes and standards is the ability for an independent group like UL to evaluate the reliability, the safety issues, the redundancies, the hardness of the systems, if you will, to make sure that they're going to perform as intended. So it's all of these things, the building construction, the active fire protection systems, the electrical system, and then the charging station, and then the third-party independent review of that equipment to make sure it's safe. That's kind of how we wrap all of that up when it comes specifically to EV charging.
Could you describe if the charging stations themselves create additional hazards with respect to causing fires in EV vehicles? And what what really causes the fire? And describe a little bit why these fires are so concerning.
Yeah, I'll I'll start with that also, and I'm going to turn some of that over to Evan, let him talk a little bit. So the the issue we heard earlier, right? The EV charging station itself is a very safe piece of equipment, right? It's like it's like the the television in our house, right? It's a piece of electrical equipment, and it's evaluated, like I said, by UL. UL is gonna is going to be the governing body to oversee that equipment to make sure that we're not producing or manufacturing junk or installing junk charging stations in these buildings. So so that that particular, that's the main aspect, I think, associated with that. So the hazard goes back to what we heard earlier, right? It's the battery in the EV. The battery in the EV is the thing that that first responders are going to be concerned with, whether it's out on a highway in an accident or if it's in a residential one- or two-family dwelling garage or if it's in a public parking structure. So the EV battery has been the hazard that's been identified as a potential problem for more than fifteen years now. As the car manufacturers get smarter, right, those technologies are improving. How do we how do we come up with better battery chemistries that might be a bit safer, that maybe won't burn at the same rate? So that, you know, the the hazard is really in the battery itself. And, you know, the the car manufacturers have that responsibility, but then groups like UL make sure that that charging equipment is compatible regardless of what battery technology goes into the EV. So those are the those are kind of two of the two of the main pieces there that I'd want to I'd want to highlight. And Evan, some more to add to that?
Yeah, just to add to that a little bit, as as Robert was talking about the National Electric Code, too, and its its requirements, there's additional requirements that relate to overcurrent protection methods and remote disconnecting methods where, you know, your 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 wires and your cables and your rating for this for this equipment is required to be a hundred and twenty-five percent of the the current that's going through it for that overcurrent protection. Same with having those remote disconnects and automatic disconnects in the event where the the charging station is going to sense an issue with the with the battery or some sort of fault in the battery system as well.
Thank you. So New Jersey is at the forefront of electric vehicles almost. Obviously, California is the leader. And there's many, many significant installations in San Francisco itself. And I understand that they are one of the leading jurisdictions in our country as to safety. Are you familiar with California's, San Francisco in particular's, requirements for EV charging and EV parking in residential multifamily homes?
Yeah, so San Francisco has a fire code ordinance where it basically requires, where there's new EV vehicle charging installation. The spring, it's required to be sprinkled, and that sprinkler design density, which is going to be how much water is going to be, you know, emitted outside of your sprinkler heads, your sprinkler piping, et cetera, is required to be what's called extra hazard group two. That's your highest level of hazard that you can get for some sort of sprinkler protection. You start with light hazard, you go to ordinary hazard, there's group one and group two, there's extra hazard one, then there's extra hazard group two. And that's a design density of zero-point-four gallons per minute per per square foot. And that's required to be done over a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot design area. It's the most water that you could put on on a hazard as possible. So San Francisco is actually one of the only jurisdictions that has designated a specific design density as it relates to EV charging stations. This is above and beyond even what the International Building Code, NFPA thirteen, which is your standard for installation of sprinkler systems, NFPA eighty-eight A, which is your parking structures. This is above and beyond even what those codes require. This is a special local ordinance from from the jurisdiction.
And we're going to get into what mitigation we've taken. But can you summarize? Have we have we met the San Francisco standards?
Yep, well, we're going to be meeting the San Francisco standards in terms of sprinkler design density and and also additionally, I know we were talking about the stand pipes that we're adding in the garage. Stand pipe systems are required in your interior exit stairs only. We are providing them within fifty feet of every EV parking space. That's a lot of additional hose connections to aid in firefighter operations, to assist in being able to throw even more water on the fire in the event of of a fire.
Okay. Let's get into this project that you helped design and a lot of the mitigation. So you were retained by Avalon, and what did they ask you to look at and help assist them with?
Yeah, so we were retained by Avalon to sort of really sort of understand the New Jersey building codes and what's required by the state for for parking garages, specifically, you know, anything related to EV charging stations, and to sort of understand the concerns from from the planning board and to determine what, in our professional opinion, mitigation strategies above and beyond code that we can make make based on our research of EV vehicle fires, case studies, et cetera, to to create a building that's going to, you know, preserve life safety and aid in the fire fire department access in the event of a fire as well.
And you're aware there's there's thirty-one charging stations that's required and mandated by state law. Can you describe where they're located and why you think they're in the appropriate location in the building?
Sure, so they're located along the exterior wall perimeter. Sure. So they're located along the exterior wall perimeter, near the code-required openings for the open parking garage. And this is going to be in an optimal spot because it's going to allow for the heat to emit out into, and vent into the atmosphere, as opposed to, you know, hitting the concrete slab above and affecting fire department operations in the garage in and of itself. So where they're located along the exterior wall is something that's definitely optimal for, in the event of a fire for those vehicles.
And what about the spacing of the EV charging? Did you have any recommendations as to how to further mitigate the possibility of fire jumping from one vehicle to another? What did you recommend there?
Yeah, so we definitely took a look at where we could, you know, and they talked about enlarging the parking spaces, right? So we're trying to limit the amount of, the chances of a fire jumping from vehicle to vehicle. In addition to that, I mean, with the sprinkler system that we have in general, sprinkler systems have great success in limiting specifically even vehicle fires to just the vehicle fire, as opposed to letting it jump from adjacent vehicle to adjacent vehicle. Also, they're out of the way of the means of egress from this parking garage. So in the event of a fire, occupants that are in the parking garage can egress safely without going past an EV charging station or EV parking spot, which was critical and something that we looked at when we were talking about the life safety of the occupants, where there could be a fire event.
One of the concerns we've heard is how difficult it is to get these fires out, and they're very hot. How hot do they get compared to gas combustion fires? And if they're difficult to get out, what purpose does the extra water or other mitigation, what is the purpose of that in terms of trying to control the fire?
Sure. So talking just of the comparison between the EV fires and a typical internal combustion engine vehicle, with the results that we had issued a report where we kind of analyzed a lot of what the Fire Protection Research Institute or Foundation had put together in terms of comparing the heat release rates of a vehicle fire, the heat release rate being the total energy produced from a fire. The results are pretty comparable between EVs and internal combustion engines. EVs peak slightly higher. They are longer in duration, whereas your internal combustion engine vehicle tends to lose that heat release rate and energy a lot sooner. So these fires are pretty comparable in peak heat release rate, but they do have a longer duration in terms of the amount of energy that it produces. And all of the research that we had done in terms of extinguishing these fires, it could take somewhere between 60 and 50 minutes, or six and 50 minutes to completely extinguish the fire, obviously. There's considerations after the effect of reignition, where these fires have to be monitored for a certain amount of time afterwards because there is a risk of reignition for these vehicle fires. But there was, one of the studies that we had looked at, the difference in the amount of water to put out to completely suppress these fires is a difference between in a greater magnitude from your gas vehicle fire to an EV vehicle fire. You need a lot more water to put these out. So when we're looking at increasing the sprinkler system to a design density that can throw more water on the fire, when we're looking at adding additional stand pipe connections for your fire department to hook up to, to provide more water for that fire, those are sort of a lot of the important things that we looked at in these proposed mitigation strategies.
And so you touched on, as we talk about these mitigation strategies, you touched on the stand pipe hose connections in a garage. What provisions did we make to accommodate that additional stand pipe location?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're showing up here in the gray areas, the NFPA standard for stand pipe systems basically says I have to have a stand pipe connection from the connection point, 100-foot length of hose, and then I kind of get a credit for another 30-foot of nozzle distance through, right? 130 feet. What the revision here is showing is that there will be a stand pipe hose connection. That's the two-and-a-half-inch outlet that you might see in the stairwell of any building. You will have one of those connections within 50 feet of the charging station itself. The charging station, not because we're concerned about the fire in the charging station, right? But the charging station is where the vehicle is going to be. So that's a good demarcation point. So that is probably, you're getting twice as many hose connections at least in this garage area than you normally might expect.
For us non-fire experts, what's a stand pipe?
I think, I always describe the stand pipe system as I'm going to take the hydrants out on the street, and I'm going to turn them like this, right? So it's a dedicated fire line to supply the connection. The connections come off that main line. They are two-and-a-half-inch connections, standard connections for any fire department in the US. So what that does is the stand pipe system basically brings the water supply closer to where the fire might be versus having to drag in 100, 200 feet of hose from the fire apparatus to where the fire source might be.
You mentioned the three-hour fire resistance rating. How did you confirm that this will perform with at least the three-hour resistance?
Yeah, so one of the things that we did is that we looked at those heat release rates that we saw from the various testing that was out there for EV vehicles. We took the peak heat release rate that was observed from an EV vehicle, and were able to use a fire modeling software to basically model a simulated fire to a, we have a 12-inch-thick concrete slab above. What we did is we looked at the most at-risk area, which in our opinion was where the height from floor to slab was the lowest. We simulated a vehicle fire below that slab.
An EV vehicle?
An EV vehicle fire below that slab. Using the heat release rate data that we had received from the testing, we determined a centerline plume temperature, which that is just some fire dynamics calculation to basically determine. We have this heat release data that doesn't necessarily correlate directly to a temperature. There's a fire dynamics component to it to figure out what the maximum temperature would be exposed onto that concrete slab from that elevation distance. That was determined to be fourth out in the 4,600 degrees Fahrenheit range. So we took that 4,600 degrees Fahrenheit exposed to our concrete slab above. And what we did is we followed the time-temperature curve from the heat release rate data that we had received from the studies, from the EV fire, and basically determined how much concrete depth would fail at that time-temperature curve at that 4,600 degrees Fahrenheit. And we were able to determine that there we would have concrete failure, concrete spalling for 1.55 inches of that 12-inch slab. How we determined that was we looked at the internal temperatures of when concrete fails. So our failure thresholds was 350 degrees Celsius for concrete, and then the rebar was at 400 degrees Celsius. At any point, if our concrete slab hit that, it was considered a failure. That's where we got the one-and-a-half inches approximately. Even those failure thresholds were conservative. Concrete spalls usually around 500 degrees Celsius. Our failure criteria was at 350 degrees Celsius. Rebar fails at around 500 degrees Celsius as well, and our failure threshold was 400 degrees Celsius. So we evaluated the fire resistance of the 12-inch concrete slab, simulating an EV fire beneath it to determine if we would have adequate fire resistance. That 10-and-a-half-inch that is remaining is still well above and beyond the three hours that's required. The International Building Code has calculated fire resistance for concrete. Usually, you can achieve three hours of fire resistance from about seven inches of concrete. So we're well above and beyond that from a fire resistance rating standpoint.
Now, you're talking about 12 inches of concrete. Is that code, or is that better than code?
From a fire resistance rating requirement, that would be better than code. A lot of times, we see those podium slabs are increased due to structural concerns for what it's supporting above. And when we had discussions with the structural engineer of record and we discussed this amount of concrete that was failing, to determine if there'd be any sort of structural concerns above. And it was deemed that there was no structural concerns at that depth of failure.
So in your professional opinion, the design of that slab would be safe in the unlikely event of an EV fire?
Yeah, and also I want to add with the fire model that we simulated does not consider a sprinkler-controlled fire at all either. That is just a fire that is going to be, that is going to be allowed to be run rampant without any intervention at all of a sprinkler system or fire department operations at all, because that's what the testing.
So worst-case scenario?
Absolute worst-case scenario.
Okay. Other mitigation measures that have been implemented, I'd like you to try to explain those for the board. You know, the over-current protection measures. Are they required and provided for the EV chargers?
Yes. So the Electrical Code in New Jersey, again, based on the National Electrical Code, there's an entire article in there, Article 625, that addresses all of the EV charging infrastructure. That kind of gets broken down to kind of commercial public garages versus what I might put in my garage at my house, as the case might be. So the NEC then requires that over-current protection, ground fault protection. And one of the main things it does is it requires compliance with this array of UL product standards. So it's those combinations of the code mandating compliance with certain UL test protocols, and then that's what we're looking for. Again, we, you know, we apply that UL model to pretty much everything. We apply it to that exit sign. We apply it to the sprinklers, the fire alarm system components. It's kind of, there's a performance requirement, and then groups like UL independently evaluate that to make sure the product or the products meet that performance requirement. So that's all baked into that part of the EV infrastructure.
And the EV chargers themselves, how do you confirm that they're all designed and specked out to the most recent UL standards? How is that done to make sure they're not, they're properly certified?
Yeah, so typically, it's done right on a project like this, and most of you probably already have heard this before, right? But you have the architect kind of sitting on top of the project management. And then the architect will hire specialty consultants, right? They'll hire electrical engineers, structural engineers, mechanical engineers. So we anticipate then, the electrical engineer of that team, they will put in a specification what those performance requirements are. Compliance with NFPA 70, Article 625. And then maybe compliance with the UL 2202 standard, things like that. So that's basically how we put all that package together. That's how we ensure that the contractors are going to know what to do, and that at some point, this ultimately will go before your building department and fire department as part of the plan review process. And they have the huge task of checking all those things, right? Making sure we do have compliance with the UCC or the applicable reference documents or standards. So that's part of, that's part of the safety infrastructure that we rely on.
In the report that you submitted, and we submitted to the board to support your testimony this evening, you talked about the importance of UL 2022 and UL 2594 certifications for EV chargers. How does this project incorporate that? And what's the importance of that?
Yeah, it does. It does. I'd be repeating myself a little bit. But those are the UL product standards that the US relies on for safe charging systems, right? That covers everything, as I mentioned. It covers everything from where the power is derived from the utility into that charging station. All the battery management components, all the fault monitoring components that go into that charging station, the wiring methods that are utilized, and then the connection between the charging station and the vehicle itself, right? That's all covered under that umbrella. Those are the probably two main UL documents that everybody relies on. There are, believe, there's an infographic I can leave with you all from UL that does a much better job of showing you all those pieces. And there's a number of other UL product standards that also go into that mix. So that's really what, that's really what we're doing, right? Again, we rely on documents like that and evaluations like that to make sure we're getting a robust charging system and a safe charging system.
In your report, you cite the Fire Protection Research Foundation. What is that? What is that foundation?
Yeah, Fire Protection Research Foundation, FPRF, it's the research arm of NFPA. Until recently, it was a separate entity, kind of under the umbrella of NFPA, but it kind of operated a little bit independently. But what they do is they are always trying to look ahead at the emerging challenges. So FPRF was established in about 1982, and they started to look at things like challenges in warehouse fires, for example. Over the years, they've looked at everything from kind of reliability of building fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems. They've been addressing a number of electrical infrastructure issues like EVs and fire department response. They have been looking at parking garage fires in earnest now for about four or five years. They have two reports specific to parking garages, and a third study's underway right now. So what FPRF does with these reports, they put a scope of the project together. They put that out for bids to a contractor, somebody that's really specialized in that subject area. And then they have them kind of go off. And sometimes the report just might be a literature survey, or it might be developing a roadmap for needed fire testing or evaluation of products or systems, or whatever the case might be. So again, they're typically involved with built environment issues. They've also done a number of studies on PPE for firefighters and things like that. But their main topic or main goal really is to look at emerging issues or challenges that we're currently faced with, right? How do we kind of come up with better ideas or better protection methods? And those recommendations in those reports then get put in front of the NFPA technical committees. NFPA has 280 technical committees that develop about 310 different codes and standards. So FPRF then is used by those committees to inform them of, here's a gap. Here's an issue, you know? Does the report give us enough information to revise something? Or many studies write, more studies needed, right? That's the answer you don't necessarily want to see. But the parking garage issue really kind of got everyone's attention probably in 2014 or 2015. We don't see many parking garage fires, but we did see some globally where we had catastrophic losses, right? And the issue really kind of came down to, not if it's an ICE vehicle or an EV, the issue came down to, we kind of have requirements based upon, when I was younger, right, the cars had a bunch of metal in them, right? They didn't have fiberglass and plastic bumpers. Or the amount of synthetics that now go in the interior of the cars, right? So our vehicle fires are different now. And the first kind of kickoff of that research foundation report, Phase 1, was really to look more broadly at, should these standards in the building codes and the standard that Evan referenced, NFPA 88A, should that have some enhanced requirements in it because the nature of vehicles, the makeup of the components and materials is so much different? So that's what FPRF does, and then that's a little bit specifically about what's going on with the three phases we're looking at right now for parking garages.
And so how did you take that foundation's best practices for emergency response to make your recommendations for this project? Had you applied those recommendations here?
I'll take a start at that, Evan. It really looks at, the FPRF report looked globally at fire events in parking garages, right? It wasn't limited to the US, right? US cases are in there, but it kind of looked globally, right? These garage fires, again, they're not unique to the US. I don't think there's any fire that's unique to the US. Other countries have them. So what So what, what's different, what's out there, and then what are we seeing in other countries? What are we seeing in this country? What are the trends that are out there? And then what are the places that potential improvements or more full-scale fire testing or potential changes to codes and standards might be in order? So that, that's, that, that's kind of how I would, uh, start with that part. Do you want to add on to that?
Yeah, I think one of the things we looked at for, for Phase One specifically, which was the first, the first time the Fire Protection Research Foundation looked into this thing, they, they definitely sort of evaluated that the largest risk in terms of parking garage fires really had to do with enclosed parking garages that were unsprinkled and had poor ventilation. Art spoke earlier about how we've now taken this parking garage, we've upgraded to an open parking garage per code. If you're an enclosed parking garage per code, you need to have a certain amount of mechanical ventilation and in the United States are required to be sprinklers, but you know, looking at the global aspect of parking garage fires. An enclosed parking garage that was unsprinkled was really where a lot of the risk was at for parking garages. There, there are even, um, the most recent code change in, in the International Building Code, there's now requirements to sprinkler in open parking garage. There are several states in the country now where you can build an open parking garage and you're not even required to put sprinklers in them and you are code compliant regardless of if, you know, not even discussing the EV charging, uh, component of it at all. So one of the code changes that sort of came out of this, um, this research was the International Building Code and NFPA saying, hey, we should look at even open parking garages and providing sprinkler systems in, in those, uh, in those conditions as well. You know, as we've seen, um, like Robert said, car fires develop and change over the years. They're much hotter now due to, due to all the plastics. It's nothing, it's no different than apartment fires you see now, different upholsteries. You know, we're getting much more synthetic now and that is having an effect on the, the temperature and the, the heat of these fires and how, and it's affecting how the fire departments can, can respond to them. Phase Two kind of, uh, really took it a step further and kind of outlined and evaluated the effectiveness of sprinkler systems in parking garages and, and their ability to control vehicle fires to just one vehicle and really, um, took a look at case studies where there were, uh, fire events in parking garages that were sprinkled and how it was contained to one vehicle and it didn't spread to another vehicle. And that, uh, Phase Two really showed that the sprinkler system had great success in, in controlling the fire to one vehicle and not, not seeing it spread.
You also cite, is it this Simons or Siemens or, Simon's White Paper?
Yeah, yeah.
Siemens, Siemens White Paper, uh, that was issued on fire safety in parking garages with EV support. What is that, what did that paper show and what were those recommendations? And how did you incorporate those recommendations into this program?
Yeah, so they, they're leader in EV charging infrastructure. One of the main, uh, findings from that was really incorporating, it was the importance of the automatic shut offs and overcurrent protection that would minimize the likelihood of any sort of charging incident. I think it really kind of hones in on how, you know, we, we really need to look at these charging stations and evaluate them and can make sure we're complying with all the applicable UL standards and codes that are in place now. And it's really kind of showing that if you're a top-end code compliant charging system that has all of these measures in there, that you're going to be effective in minimizing the likelihood of a, of a fire due to, to a charging incident.
Okay, and you, we talked about sprinklers. Just a little bit more on the sprinklers. Uh, are these upgraded sprinklers? Are these according to the code? Are they more upgraded than the code requires? How did we address the, the concern you heard from the client that they want to make sure they have every feature available to address these, these fires?
Sure. So whenever the, um, code started to change, right, these are the current additions now that have a mandatory sprinkler requirement regardless of the garage is open or not. The sprinkler design criteria uses this concept of a density, right? How many gallons per minute per square foot of floor area am I going to put water on? So the, the current provision in the newer codes, right, um, is .20 gallons per minute per square foot. And that is indicative of what the standard calls an, an ordinary hazard type of, of design, right? That's, that's typical maybe for maybe a factory with light manufacturing or places like that. The room we're in now, this would be what's called a light hazard design, right? It has the, the least amount of water, but it's based upon the fuel load that we, that we, we have in here. So looking around, there were a couple of resources that our report makes reference to. One of those was an NFPA standard dealing with energy storage systems, right? Which is a whole other thing that your board might be dealing with if you're not already. But, uh, energy storage systems, that, that standard, um, addresses large capacity battery energy storage systems. And some of their recommendations and some of their research on those size battery systems kind of came around this .40 gallon per minute per square foot density. So, so we make reference to that again in context, right? NFPA 55 is not for EV charging, but it gives us a perspective maybe of where a, a density has been kind of established for battery energy storage systems. And then when we look more broadly, we go to the West Coast, like we heard about, San Francisco did do an ordinance, a supplement to their fire code, and they settled on the .40 density. If I look in the current edition of the, uh, of the, uh, the UCC in New Jersey, I believe the density, the minimum that's required in the state code is a .15 density, right? So this is, this is beyond anything that's required in the state. It's beyond anything that's required in most states. And I believe there's even parts of California that wouldn't require that. San Francisco, California allows individual jurisdictions to do modifications to the state code. They typically have to be more than, uh, right? They're usually, they usually can't go backwards, they have to go forward. So there's a case where San Francisco exercised its ability to amend the state code and come up with that, that higher density, the .40. So we have a couple of places where this is starting to emerge right now. And you know, time will tell if more individual jurisdictions or more states or even if the national codes and standards kind of adopt that down the road. But here, um, here you're, you're, you're getting, you're getting a sprinkler system that is the, the, it's at the top of the heap pretty much, so.
So you've mentioned San Francisco. Any other jurisdictions that you reviewed that have updated code requirements that you took and you took the best out of and applied it to this project?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, uh, a couple of things come to mind. I think we mentioned in our report, we mentioned Miami Dade County. Our, our firm does a fair amount of work down there and they haven't codified anything yet. But, you know, wanting to work with the local jurisdiction, you know, they had some concerns. So typically on our projects down there, and they're similar to what we see, except sometimes they are, they're 40-story buildings with, uh, with parking garages underneath. We're working on one actually that has a car elevator that brings your car up to your condo on your level. So that's a slightly different challenge. But, you know, Miami Dade had, you know, very, uh, kind of forward-looking department. And they said like, a little bit concerned about this, you know, what are some things we, we can do here? So, uh, we have looked at, you know, kind of increasing the sprinkler density for what they have. They've expressed some interest in, uh, the fire blanket concept. They asked about, you know, could the EV charging stations, when possible, can they be located closer to the main entrance to make access to the garage by firefighters a little bit easier? So, you know, we, we're open to discussing those things and having dialogue. Sometimes we can do one of those or maybe two of those and other cases it's not practical. But, you know, they are, they're like, just like here, they have, at people asking the right questions. What, you know, what, what do we really need to do to, to make sure we're providing as safe a structure as we can once we bring the EVs in and the charging stations into the, into the garage?
Thank you. Uh, we, we talked about a lot of different things and a lot of different mitigation. Can we, why don't we just try to identify them one by one? What, what are the code requirements that we have in this building? And what additional measures such as the fire blankets, uh, are being provided over and above what the code would require? Based on all of the, all of the reports that you've cited this evening and all the best recommendations and best practices?
Sure. So starting with the sprinkler system, um, designing the sprinkler system to that extra hazard group two design density would be above and beyond the code required ordinary hazard, uh, design density. Additional stand, standpipe hose connections, um, provided throughout the garage would be above and beyond code. Having the overcurrent and remote shut offs are required by code, but we are providing those. The EV fire blankets are sort of just an enhanced technology component that's coming along to assist in, in fire department, um, operations and, and attacking the fire. And then what else? The open parking garage being above, you know, the 40% of the perimeter and 20% of the wall area, albeit, you know, slightly, but still above, above would be considered above and beyond code. Still open parking garage.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think.
Size of slab you talked about also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I was going to say the other one, right, that we heard earlier, right? Is, is that the, um, uh, the optimal locations, right? Keep them on an exterior wall, um, right? That's one of the things. That's not a code requirement. And then place as many as possible underneath this kind of, uh, this area outside the footprint of the building above, right? So those are some things that are not required. Those are, that's another example of another enhancement that's been, uh, that's been made here by, uh, by the project team.
Did you have a chance to review the Borough's Fire Official Letter of April 4th?
Yeah, yes.
He cited a number of publications in that report. Do you have a chance to review those quickly or?
Yeah, I took a look at them, yes.
Okay. Do, do any of those, uh, make the recommendation that, uh, chargers either are dangerous or cause fires or, uh, EV parking should be prohibited within residential parking garages?
I did not see anything of that.
Right.
Yeah, I think, uh, it depends on which one we're looking at. Some, some anecdotally make reference to, um, trying to make an association between the charger and the EV fire. But, you know, those, what, what, what that doesn't do, it, it's mostly anecdotal and it gives a percentage, I think, somewhere, but we, we have no context. We don't know, is that a charger in somebody's garage in their private home? In other words, the data nationally that's available doesn't tell us that these chargers are indiscriminately catching on fire or causing fires in garages. So I think the, he had, some of his documents I think have anecdotal references like that, but nothing that I could point to to say that's a credible source or that's, it's a piece of, you know, just somebody's opinion maybe, so.
Some of those articles did make recommendations for mitigation. Did we incorporate most of those recommendations, if not all the recommendations, in a couple of the articles that, that recommended things?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think, you know, they, they, they all, I think they all, and I think regardless of what literature you look at, if it's the FPRF reports or other independent studies or scientific papers that have been put out, they talk about, um, robustness of the building construction. They talk about enhancements to the automatic sprinkler system. They talk about enhancements to fire suppression operations, which could include the addition of additional standpipe outlets or hose connections, uh, on the areas of the garage where the, um, where the, um, uh, EV charging is going to take place or for that matter where the EV vehicles are going to be parked regardless of them charging or not. So those are pretty standard recommendations, I think, along the way. They make reference to the requirements to have properly designed electrical systems and charging system components, which take us back to our kind of UL NEC infrastructure to make sure that those things are designed safely and installed safely and then maintained safely for the life of the building. I think those are the main items.
The research that I was able to do, it, it appears that most of the significant fires were done outside of this country or, or had outside of this country. You think that's because maybe the, the code compliance and inspection requirements are not as robust as they are in America?
It, it's, it's, it's hard to say until you, you know, see whatever, if a full investigation was done, you know, what, what were the circumstances? I think one of those, one of the garage fires that's referenced is part of this dialogue broadly, not just concerning EVs but garages in general. The initial, uh, uh, initial accusation was it was caused by an EV. It was, it wasn't, it was caused by an ICE vehicle, uh, uh, you know, traditional combustion engine. So, you know, it, it's, it's really hard to say if their codes are lacking. Again, they have different code requirements. They have different building construction requirements. They have different firefighting, uh, guidelines in Europe versus what we see in the US. So, you know, it, it, it's hard to make an apples-to-apples comparison there.
Are you aware of any major catastrophic, catastrophic fires in parking garages, residential parking garages in this country?
Catastrophic, no. If we had parking garage fires, yes. And, you know, the literature is pretty much going to show that most of those, if not all of them, were kind of centered on, uh, internal combustion engine type fires. So, because, you know, we, we, you know, we just have more of those. We have more experience with them and there's just a lot more of them out there right now, so. But, uh, no, I'm not, not aware of any.
If you could for us, could you just summarize, uh, the key findings and conclusions in your report regarding the safety of these installations, these EV charging installations in this building?
Yeah, so I think, uh, Robert talked a lot about the electrical infrastructure that's, that's going to be required and provided for these charging stations. Taking a look at the structure component and the thermal analysis that we were able to do on the, on the podium slab, we were able to, to determine that even after a, uh, a fire event involving an EV vehicle, evaluating the fire resistance rating and structural integrity of the slab above would be, would be maintained. Increasing the, the sprinkler design density would assist in, in limiting the, the risk of a fire spreading, right? The sprinkler control, um, aspect to that will help limit, limit fire beyond just an initial vehicle. Standpipe connections and EV blankets to help assist, uh, fire department operations for, for fighting a fire. So those are sort of the, the key findings.
Do you have an opinion? I mean, we talked about the building. How about the safety of firefighters? That would, in the unlikely event there is a fire here, um, and an EV fired. How about, how about the safety of those firefighters? Are, are they in grave danger fighting these types of fires compared to other fires?
Uh, I'll start with that one. Um, general answer is no. Firefighting by its nature is a dangerous profession, right? You know, they, they don't go into a room like this to save people, right? They go into a room like this when it's, it's on fire and all of our systems, all our safety systems have failed us, right? So it's an inherently dangerous job whether they are, uh, at a, a, a EV fire in a parking garage, they're in a residential apartment fire, they're fighting a fire in a vehicle out on the interstate, right? It's inherently dangerous wherever. So organizations like NFPA, like International Association of Firefighters, International Association of Fire Chiefs, and more, most recently the UL Fire Safety Research Institute, ULFSRI, everybody's been providing tools, training, uh, guidelines for how to address any type of hazard, right? Our, our fire departments are now referred to, right? They're not, they're not necessarily fire departments anymore. They're all hazard departments, right? We call the fire department for every potential single thing that's going to go south, right? When it comes to the building or whatever the case might be. So the, the national standards organizations like NFPA, the related firefighter, uh, organizations like I AFC, I AFF, and I think, you know, again, most recently ULFSRI, they have come up with, you know, the way we fight fires now is different than we did 10 years ago or 20 years ago. I didn't mention I was a volunteer firefighter for beginning, uh, from, actually the time was 15 until I was 22. That's how I kind of got interested in this business. And the stuff that was done then, you would be hauled off somewhere right now and put in a, put in jail or whatever. So it's an inherently dangerous profession, but all of these resources are always put out. out there to make it as safe as possible for firefighters, right? So the first responders are a, are a key component and, you know, the location of the standpipe hose outlets, the supplemental ones that are there, uh, that helps. You know, th- these fires require full structural P P E, um, and, and again, I think we have requirements now or recommendations that firefighters use full P P E now when they're on the interstate battling a car fire, right?
And what's P P E?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, personal protection equipment, sorry. So, right, there's a whole structural firefighting ensemble, um, and, and that's kinda the, that's the goal that the fire department wants to meet, right? For all of their, all of their members and all of the folks who are gonna be, you know, going into these environments. So, um, you know, I can, you know, we, we've, we've had, we've lost firefighters in warehouse fires, we've lost firefighters in one and two family dwellings. So it's inherently dangerous regardless of where the fire is, right? It doesn't have to be in a parking garage with an E V, uh, on fire, right? It's just, it's just a dangerous job in total.
But there is training available.
Absolutely, yeah. There's training, uh, available from, uh, NFPA's got a host of, uh, it sounds like I still work there, but, uh, NFPA's got a host of free training resources, uh, dealing with E Vs. U S Fire Administration has a host of resources, and I think most of it is, I think all of it actually is still free dealing with E V fires. And then U L F S R I, they've, uh, put together a tremendous, um, set of kinda on-demand webinars, if you will, or self-paced programs to learn about the hazards of E V, firefighting techniques and things like that. And, and when, when, when the, when the vehicle goes in the garage, when it goes in a building, you know, the, the firefighters are dealing with a structural fire, right? There's always a source of fuel, you know, it might be a co- internal combustion engine vehicle, it might be an E V. If I'm up in an apartment fire, right, it's gonna be the furnishings and contents. So these fires are treated like a structural fire. And then the, the requirements around that say, what is the hazard that I'm going into? So the fire department wants, would wanna adjust a pre-plan, right? They probably should already have it for, uh, responding to E Vs, fires that might occur out in the street or on the interstate. So the fire departments always have to be adaptable to whatever the new thing is that's coming along. They might not like it, but, you know, we all rely on them to, to kinda help us kinda navigate, negotiate this, uh, along the way. So those organizations all have, you know, uh, really good training resources, some of those, uh, resources can be done in person, um, and things like that. So, you know, the training, training, training is absolutely crucial for, for every first responder.
You know, I've spoken with our client, uh, obviously they're a part of this community and they would be willing to donate a ten thousand dollar contribution to your fire department for in-person training that you could bring in to alleviate concerns of, are you properly trained to combat with the very unlikely event that there'd be a fire in a garage such as this? So that, that offer is stipulated. So I, it's just in summary, I mean, it was a, a lot of great testimony, I appreciate it. As, as professional engineers specializing in fire safety, do you have any concerns that this building and E V charging at this building causes any unacceptable risks in, in, in this community or to the folks that will live here in this building?
I do not.
No, no, I have, I would have none, you have, you have all these enhancements and these enhancements tend to be in lockstep with something we really haven't talked about that, um, the, the national standard, that committee is actually vetting proposed changes that are gonna go towards this, but, you know, what, what they're proposing right now, it's, you know, in terms of the sprinkler requirements, they're, they're proposing less than what you're being offered here, what this project's gonna incorporate. So, um, you know, th- this is a very safe design, it's a very effective design, it's a very thoughtful design because it didn't just consider one element, right? And that, that's what you have to do in fire protection engineering. It's not one thing that we rely on to make everyone and everything safe, it's, it's all those things working together and, you know, fortunately, in this country, um, we're pretty successful with that regardless if it's, you know, an apartment building, a high-rise office building, a high-rise hotel, whatever the case might be. So, uh, you're being provided a, a very safe structure here.
That completes our direct. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
And forgive me if you asked already, but, uh, you mentioned, is it a wet or a dry sprinkler system?
It, it, it would be a dry pipe sprinkler system since the garage is unheated?
Is that supplemented by a fire pump or would you require action by the fire department to get water into the system?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it's gonna be both, actually. So, right, every sprinkler system, I'll do the second part first. Every sprinkler system has to have a fire department connection, right, for the fire department to supplement, uh, the piping network. The quantity of water that this sprinkler system is going to have to discharge is gonna be north of a thousand gallons per minute. And that's assuming that I open the number of sprinklers in this, you heard this twenty-five hundred square foot design area, that's the, that's the, kinda the area that we expect the maximum amount of sprinklers to ever operate. That never happens, you know, but you never wanna say never. So, but with that, that density, right, it's about a thousand gallons per minute. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I haven't studied the Somerville water supply, uh, yet, but, unless you have a phenomenal water supply, you know, that, that you're probably gonna be requiring a fire pump. And then you always have to have the, the fire department connection.
I, I have a, a couple of questions. Uh, one is, um, the gray areas on the, the map now, those are for now, but the state law says you have to build for the future. Where are you gonna put more gray spots so that you can maintain separate parking spaces?
That's all.
That's all?
That, that, can I?
Let's address that, cause, uh, I think what you're referring to is the make ready.
Yes.
Right, so these are all of the spaces, all right, why don't you describe on?
So we, we, you know, um, what we're indicating as E V is the full requirement, the now and the make ready. So this is the, the full package that's required, um, by the state law.
Okay, I didn't know that, thank you, um.
So the state law would require that we build all thirty-one as make ready? Within the first, with, with, upon the opening, one-third of those would have to be activated. I think then in two years, the second third, and then in, after four years, you activate the balance of them. Avalon is agreeable to activating them in that manner and not all at once.
Okay, and, um, second question I had was, uh, in the borough, the borough officials' fire report that he put in item number six, says the E V fires emitted a mix of highly flammable toxic gases, including hydrogen fluoride, hydrogen chloride, and hydrogen cyanide, which is extremely hazards to the, uh, to first responders, nearby residents, and the general public. These toxic gases should not be confined or restricted by structures, but allowed to dissipate in an open space. Even though the parking level is gonna have open windows and open areas to get outside, is this safe for a car to be burning and the gas is hitting the ceiling and then going up into apartment two A, two B, three C? And their ventilation?
Yeah, so that, so this, this concrete slab we've talked about, that's a continuous slab. So, you know, there.
No, I meant for it to pour out to the sides and then up the building. That's what I'm just wondering, is there some sort of mitigation for that? Because those kinda chemicals, sounds like they might be dangerous. Are our fighter, are our firefighters have the masks to filter out that kinda stuff or are they just?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So again, you know, if you look at, you look at structural firefighting protocols, right? I, I don't know that there's a circumstance with a structural fire that first responders are not in full, uh, P P E, like the personal protective gear, including S, the self-contained breathing apparatus and all the equipment. This volume, you know, we'd have to go look at the, but the volume is so large, without doing any calculations, right? There's so much volume for that to dissipate, right? It's not like we're gonna be in an enclosed one or two family dwelling garage, right? We, we have, we have plenty of space for this stuff to vent, for this stuff to dissipate and for it to become diluted. If we have a fire in the garage, I presume that the building fire alarm system is gonna require an evacuation of those occupants, uh, to the outside anyhow. So, you know, if we, if we have a fire, however unlikely, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a couple of quick ones for you. So ju- just, I know, I mean, you guys are obviously very knowledgeable on the codes, I appreciate that, that was great. The, the information you were getting to do your in-house studies, um, the temperatures that, um, I, I believe you had said weren't very different from a combustion, where did you, what were those numbers that, you know, cause you said it was like forty-seven hundred degrees for, um, the E V, for the lithium battery? What, what is the gas combustion, what's the ICE vehicle burn rate?
Yeah, so we derive that temperature from the heat release rate that was provided and there was a study that we had, we had cited in our report.
I think. I was trying to find it in the report, I, I.
Yeah, so it's, uh, if you look at the graph on page fifteen, uh, we cite the differences in heat release rate between E Vs, plug-in hybrids and ICE vehicles. And it's cited there, it's a, it's a study by four authors there and it's, uh, it's heavily cited, it's always one of the first comparison studies of heat release rate between E Vs, um, and ICE vehicles from twenty-twelve. So you'll notice that we took E V number three, which peaked at about nine thousand kilowatts as our heat release rate. And then the following calculation method on the, on the following page is sort of how we derive the, um, centerline plume temperature.
When, when was that one from? I'm sorry, I don't have that full thing, I have seven pages in front of me, so I must be missing some of it.
So thi- this is a, this is the full presentation that we, we forwarded to the board, so we probably should mark this into evidence care. It's not the summary one that was submitted back in March.
We talked about the one that says Avalon Somerville Station Phase Two Fire Protection and Hazard Mitigation Report, fifty-four pages.
Your microphone. Yes, dated April, dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-five is what we're citing.
Yes, April fourth, twenty-twenty-five, just for the record, that, and the, um, transcriber, that's entitled Avalon Somerville Station Phase Two, E V Parking Protection and Hazard Mitigation Report, dated April four, twenty-twenty-five, prepared by S L S Consulting and it consists of fifty-four pages.
I think we're up to A fifteen.
A thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, correct.
So, and, and can you just, um, when, when was that study?
Twenty-twelve.
That was the twenty-twelve? And is that the same one that had the six to fifty minutes to put out an E V?
That was from, I believe that was the Research Institute. I'll have to double check that one.
Because again, I'm just looking at, you know, all the, um, the U L listings and the different NFPA's and everything and the, the versions that were, you know, applicable, you know? Let's look at the NFPA thirteen, um, that's the twenty-twenty-two version and it doesn't even address the E Vs. So while we're going well and above it in this design, it doesn't even take into account E Vs in parking decks or anything like that. So I'm just, you know, I, I wanna look forward and make sure we're looking at things that are applicable to the E Vs, not just the code that's, you know, five years old that doesn't even address the E Vs, which I understand that's the code and what's, what we're looking at. I'm just trying to figure out where these, you know, the six to fifty minutes to put out an E V, average time, is coming from. And those temperatures that, you know, the, the Fire commercials report had it at like fifteen hundred to five thousand degrees, seems like a pretty big difference to me. So I just kinda wanna see where these, the differences are coming from.
Yep, we have it cited in our, in our larger report, um, it's got the, the graph comparison of the heat release rates. It's just understanding the difference between the heat release rate graphs and then that's how we derive the maximum temperatures using the, we have a formula here that we use, so.
I think the question is that the fire official believes that combustible fires are, run about fifteen hundred degrees and the E V fires can run up to five thousand degrees. That, that's the, that's the statement by the fire official. I don't believe he's here this evening, is he?
He is not.
Okay, so we, we won't have an opportunity to ask him about where he got that information, but that's the question I think he's raising. How do you reconcile that statement versus what your study shows?
Yeah, so, so I, I think, uh, there's, there's, there's two, two distinctions, right? There's temperature and then there's concept of heat release rate. So the temperature of the E V, remember, this is the vehicle, right? This isn't the charging station, this is the vehicle. Those are gonna burn at a hotter temperature. The heat release rate is the amount of energy that, that's gonna be, um, that, that's released over a, a period of time, right? I mean, it, um, so the heat release rates for an ICE vehicle and an E V are similar. However, because of the nature of the characteristics of the battery chemistry in the E V, it is gonna burn hotter. There, there's a great, uh, little YouTube video that U L F S R I has, kinda looking at temperature and heat release rate. And it's a two-minute thing, um, but the, the scenario is the engineer takes just a simple candle and they light the candle and then they're able to kinda show with some measurement equipment, the temperature of the candle and then what the little minuscule heat release rate is. And then what he does, he takes three candles, right? They're all identical and he lights all three, puts them together and the three candles still burn at the same temperature, but because I've got three burning, there's, there's a higher heat release rate because I've kinda tripled the fuel package. That's kinda what, that's kinda what we see here. Then as Evan said, we use that heat release rate to, uh, to do a, a calculation on what the expected temperature is. So, um, if I do that for an ICE vehicle, I might come up with fifteen hundred degrees or two thousand degrees, um, as a maximum temperature. We did that analysis for the, um, uh, for the E V based upon its known characteristics. And again, that's a, that's a pretty standard, uh, heat release rate, uh, graph. Again, as Evan said, it's been referenced forever, U L's been trying to replicate that, see if there's anything radically different and so far there isn't. And then we look at, from that calculation, that's where we're getting the forty-six hundred degree temperature. So we're, we're, we, and that, that, that's what our analysis is based on. That's the temperature that's hitting that twelve-inch concrete slab and then we show what the potential damage is. And then if we're still, uh, confident that we're gonna maintain the three-hour rating and the answer is yes.
Um, one, one just clarification on this from my, there's a lot of information. So at that forty-six hundred degrees at, you know, three, three and a half foot height where the fire is, at the twelve-foot height of the, where the deck is above it, we're saying it's not gonna hit that, and again, my quick calculation, six hundred and fifty degrees up there, that will start degradating the concrete?
So, so the, the measurement of the, so we have our fire location, which we set to be a height that would be similar to like a standard sedan window height, right? And what we're looking at is that elevation difference between, you know, your car elevation and the slab above. This difference here, the temperature hitting the concrete slab, that's the forty-six, forty-six hundred, hitting the concrete slab. The point at which the concrete fails, when we're talking about the, the degradation of the concrete, that's the concrete slab's internal temperature. So that internal temperature is, you know, ambient or whatever, when it's, when it's sitting where it is. And it's when we're exposing that slab at that forty-six hundred degrees Fahrenheit for a certain amount of time, it's gonna heat up that slab. When the internal temperature of the slab hit our cer- our failure criteria, we consider it a, a failure and a loss and that's where that, uh, degradation came from.
Thank you. And, and remember, the, the other thing, we, we mentioned it, I think, once or twice, that calculation is, there's zero intervention, right? There's no sprinkler system operating, there's no manual fire suppression, that the vehicle's just burning, um, without any, anything else going on.
And you used the lowest section of the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Lowest.
Yeah, lowest.
So it, I understand your question, I mean, it is, it is hard to understand how forty-five hundred degrees is not a lot worse than fifteen hundred degrees. So how, how do you, in, in, in non-professional words, how do you describe in science and engineering how that is in a significant difference, when you say there are similar burns?
So, yeah, so there, there's, and this, this confuses the heck out of my students when we talk about fire dynamics as well.
We're all getting that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, so you're, you're, don't, don't feel bad at all. So you, you've got heat release rate, right? So the, the heat release is based upon the energy that is in the fuel package, right? If we look at the, you know, if we look at the fuel package for the, you know, for the EV, right, we can, you know, that's what those graphs show, right? That, that's what is potentially there. The rate at which the energy is released can have an impact on the temperature, right? There's not a direct one-to-one correlation, but it, it can have, it can have an impact. So if I'm looking at something that's two thousand degrees versus forty-six hundred degrees, yeah, definitely that, that's a difference. But if we went back and looked at, well, what, what impact is a two thousand degree temperature impinging on that concrete slab half? You know, we might find that the concrete slab at the, that one inch mark or one point five-five inch mark, it goes from ambient temperature to maybe, maybe two hundred degrees Fahrenheit, right? And what it is, it, it's, you know, the, the concrete is a, is a, it's an absorber, it's a, it's a mass absorber of the heat, right? It can help the heat dissipate, it can go internally up through the slab, it can go laterally along the slab. So there's a lot, you know, twelve inches of concrete is a lot, as Evan said, we typically can get a three-hour fire resistance rating with only seven inches. So now I've got five more inches, I've got more places for that heat to kind of flow, if you will, you know, using, you know, using conduction to get to other parts of the slab. So that, but that, you know, that's, that's why we use this worst-case analysis, so.
That's all I have.
There'll be a test.
I had one question. You were referenced, in the FPRF study that you have referenced, was there any other recommendations after that from NFPA, basically saying that there were still some significant studies that needed to be done on the sprinkler systems to ensure more safe practices when it comes from vehicle to vehicle? Or were they pretty confident with those results?
Yeah, so, so I think two things, so there, there's a phase, phase three of that report that's now, I think, just getting started, I think it started in December of last year. And that is to specifically look at the sprinkler provisions. You know, some of the, some of the, these sprinkler densities that have been thrown around out there have been, you know, point two, you know, whi- which is what the first change was, and then people said, you know, do we need more than that? There's been some interesting pushback from the NFPA Sprinkler Committee about, you know, that even seems too severe, you know, what, you know, we're requiring sprinklers now in every one of these garages. The US hasn't necessarily had a, a fire issue with parking garages, I don't see that changing. But again, it's trying to kind of look out, if we do get, you know, most vehicles, you know, end up being the EVs by twenty thirty or twenty thirty-five, depending on what, what target, right? That, you know, that, that, that will be a, a different fire load in the garage, and then what, what's appropriate, in other words, you know, some people might say NFPA is already behind the curve on this, or the national standards are behind the curve, but now that, you know, states like California, and I think New Jersey, Massachusetts, X number have to be EVs, that fuel load's going to change, it is changing, so what, what is reasonable for the national standards to have? One of those provisions that are being contemplated right now by the NFPA committee that deals with the parking garages, they're looking at nominal discharge sprinkler densities of point three gallons per minute per square foot. That won't be finalized for probably another eighteen months or so, but there's a, there's a, there's a proposed change that's been put forward. My experience has been, when the committee puts something out like this as kind of the first draft or the first concept, that's probably going to stick, right? So, you know, they're, they're kind of recommending point three, we're doing point four, so that, that FPRF report, phase three, is hopefully going to give us more answers, like, we're going to find out, you know, the point two really that we have now, it's fine, or it does need to be point three, or it needs to be point four, or, what did I say, Brian? The worst recommendation the report is, in a study, we need more study, right? But I, I, you know, thi- this has been intentional at each, each step, right? Broadly, garage fires, current protection measures nationally, internationally, and then this focus back to the design and performance of the automatic sprinkler systems, that, that's what phase three is doing.
So just, I guess, so after an hour and a half, two, two hours of testimony, trying to kind of cull this down, so, so if I'm, correct me if, if, if I'm not culling it correctly. So your testimony is that it's not so much the battery charging nationally that's the issue, if there is an issue. The, the issue is really the cars themselves, whether they're damaged, whether they're, it's, it's a function of the, the EVs, and not really a function of the charging. And that the, the, the elements that you've incorporated into this not only address the EV charging, but they also address the potential for, I'll call it an EV failure, a fire. Is that, is that a good summation?
Yeah.
Overall summation?
Yeah, yeah, when, when you, when you have the right charging infrastructure, and you have an EV, right, we're going to have exceptions, right? If I have an EV that was in an accident and the battery was damaged, or somebody intentionally damages a battery, right? That, that, that's kind of the, the jumping off point when we might expect an EV vehicle fire, right? The, the, these things just don't happen, right? There's a fault somewhere in the battery, and that fault is usually the result of physical damage, or, you know, you probably hear the stories after flooding in Florida and from the hurricanes, right? If those batteries get inundated, especially with salt water, that can, that can degrade the battery and then cause internal short circuits and things like that. So at that point, you know, the, the EV charging station ha- has no, has no part of that, right? The, the fault is going to be in the battery itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, I, multiple times I heard you say that these are required by the state in New Jersey. Can you just clarify further record, are you saying that they are required in parking decks or garages in general?
They are required for projects of a certain size, and this one qualifies for it.
Correct.
And they are required to be part of the project. Here, the project includes the garage, perfectly permissible, there's no other place to put the required spaces. So yes, they would be required in the garage in this instance.
So just to further that, you say there's no other possible place to put these. I noticed the architectural rendering. It seems like the spaces are concentrated where there's no residential units above it, I believe that's a courtyard right there. What is, is there any reason why that can't be great, at grade parking, get rid of the courtyard area, to completely move the parking spaces outside of the structure and eliminate all of this? Is there any reason that cannot be done?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's room for it. We, we looked at those alternatives, I mean, we, we heard your comments from the last meeting. Can you move them off-site? Can you move them on the street? Can you, is there another location onsite? And we've explored all of those in detail, and we can't. A, the law doesn't permit you, under its current narrative, to move them off-site, they have to be part of this project, and there's certainly no room on the, on the street. We heard a lot of residents complain about street parking at the last meeting. We can't eat up thirty-one spaces, nor is it practical, or does it make sense to have parking far away from the building for residents who have EV cars? The reality is, and Mayor, you hit on this, even if we get rid of the chargers, you're not going to outlaw EV parking in garages anywhere in your municipality. It would be contrary to law, and it would be discriminatory against this one project because you haven't outlawed them in any other garage. EV cars are still going to come in here, that's where the risk is, albeit very small. It's not the chargers themselves. You're hearing, when properly designed and properly certified, the risk is next to nothing. So we're stuck with a mandated law, you're stuck with a mandated law, you've all taken an oath to uphold the law. I understand you can have opinions as to certain things, but you don't have discretion in this instance. The law tells you what you need to do. If there was an alternative, we could explore that, but there's not, we did explore. So what we did instead is, we've got one of the most robust designs you'll see. I think you've heard other jurisdictions in the country that have similar concerns that have raised their standards, we meet those and exceed those. So you've accomplished a goal of getting the best design that engineering can, can, can take, can do, and, and that's what we presented before you this evening.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. The data cited in the thermal studies is over a decade old. Do we find an issue or see any issues with that, with the new advances in, because we talked, I mean, to your point before, you talked about contents in rooms, how everything's synthetic, everything's changed. You know, a room fifty years ago, there's a great video, we talked about YouTube, there's a great video online that shows a room with nineteen fifties furniture versus a room with today's furniture, the room with fifties furniture after thirty minutes hasn't fully caught on fire, whereas the room with more contemporary furniture went up in less than three minutes. So with twelve-year-old data, thirteen-year-old data at this point, do we see any gaps? Is there any mention of gaps in the, in the report you, that you talked about from the Research Foundation with new EVs and their battery capacities and capabilities?
No, no, I, I've, I've not seen any, I've, for the good or bad, a lot of the provisions in fire protection, right, we, we kind of establish a baseline measurement, right, and then, and then we kind of go from there. I, I don't, I've seen nothing in literature from, from the manufacturers themselves, or from groups like the NHTSA, National Highway Transportation Agency, that says these vehicles are markedly different now, right? These vehicles already had lithium ion batteries in them, you know, twelve years ago, it's essentially the same battery chemistry now, they have essentially already, when they, because they're so new, they already had synthetic materials in them. So there's nothing markedly different between what our literature says in twenty twelve versus what we're seeing some, you know, maybe fifteen or fourteen years later. I, there's nothing that would concern me with that.
Anybody else?
Chair, I have one question.
Go ahead.
One of the things that I had read with regard to the chargers was that in situations where chargers are causing the fires, one of the reasons could be overcharging. And I think there's some, some sort of automatic shut-off, since this is going to be charging for residences, I presume somebody will come in, they'll park overnight, go inside, and, and that's a possibility. That automatic shut-off, does that cover that type of situation, or is that a separate type of mechanism?
Yeah, that, that, that's all part of the, of the UL twenty twenty-two provisions, the electrical code, Article six twenty-five provisions, that, that's, that's all built into the automatic shut-offs.
Okay.
Battery management, things like that, yes.
So that, so basically, it eradicates the possibility of an overcharging?
It, it, it makes it nearly zero, right? There's nothing, right, we have no guarantees anywhere in the codes, but yes.
I wish we did, but yes.
Since you're a lawyer, I had to be careful, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else from the board? For these experts? Did you have any other testimony?
No, not unless you have questions, I'd like to, we, we did receive.
Do you want to, we should open it up to the public.
I know, that's why I want to know if you had more first, and if you have, don't, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to provide a closing argument, but we did receive the, the updated fire officials' letters on Friday, which caused us to do a lot of work over the weekend and submit to you a legal memorandum as to what we believe the law requires and what the facts and, and reports that are available demonstrate in terms of safety of charging, EV charging, as well as EV vehicles themselves. So I submitted that on Monday, I'd like to mark that into evidence. I guess we're up to A sixteen. It's a legal memorandum from my office that we prepared in, in response to the fire official's letter of April fourth, where he concludes and, and disturbingly recommends that this board not approve the application. He's not here to cross-examine as to how he finds that conclusion, and how he's authorized or qualified to make that conclusion. So we, we accept it for what it is, and we've tried to address it in the legal memorandum, and that's why that was submitted.
I'm going to open it up to the public for any questions. Hearing none, I will close public. Go ahead.
All right, I'll go.
Thank you. That's a beautiful building. It really is. It's a beautiful building, and we want to see it built, we do. Obviously, as you said, Mr. Bruno, this is all new to everybody, all of this stuff going My job, the board's job, as you know, is, primary job, Mayor's primary job is safety and security of our citizens, that's it. Everything else, to me, is secondary, that's the primary role of, of my job, and that's what I think this board looks at. We have to ensure that the residents, when this is built, when this is built, are safe and secure, and that should there be an issue, our first responders are safe and secure, as well as they can be, because they are volunteers, all of them. I got one sitting next to me, actually, I got two sitting next to me, yeah. So, you know, I think the state has created a scenario of unintended consequences, I think we can all agree on that, and I think unfortunately, we are faced first with those unintended consequences. I think your testimony was extremely comprehensive, extremely, from, from both of you and, and from Mr. Bruno. It's just such a new and emerging issue that I think you've grappled with it, and this board grapples with it, because you say the laws may be, the, the laws say one thing. We have to corroborate that those laws do say that. What I would suggest to the board is that for that corroboration, we actually bring in a professional, a fire protection professional like that, to, to corroborate or add additional testimony to what has been provided today. Again, I think your testimony was extremely comprehensive. But I, my sense of reading the tea leaves is that the board would like that additional corroboration. I also believe that we, we have to have time to respond, I didn't even say respond, to review Mr. Bruno's letter. Very comprehensive, again, very, very long and thorough, and I think we have to have the ability to go through that as well, to ensure that everything that you have in there is correct, and that we understand exactly what your position is in that. So I, you know, my, my suggestion is that we, we hold off on bringing this to a formal vote, and that we allow time to bring in that professional, could be at the next meeting, and then allow this board that opportunity to corroborate the information that was presented here tonight, and, and also to, to corroborate and thoroughly vet the information that, that Mr. Bruno provided to the board. So I don't know, anybody else? So I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but I think that's a fair direction.
Mr. Chairman, we can, we, may we take a short recess so I can speak with my client?
You don't need to.
Would you like to?
I made my response to you ready. I'll do it myself if you could.
So I, I didn't have a chance to conclude our presentation and Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying, but we, we've been here, we presented the testimony, the law straightforward, it's not complicated. The concern you have, I understand it, but it's not founded in any, any fact or reports. You've heard compelling testimony from the architect and the engineer. The evidence is undeniable. I understand you have good, good intent, but it's not supported by facts, law, or even your own fire officials' guidance. His guidance suggests exactly what we're doing and we're doing it. We think it's time to close the matter and act on this application. The data is crystal clear. EV fires are rare. EV FireSafe, a, a global publication, tallies just 393 incidents in 13 years across 33 million EVs and only 15% were tied to charging. None from code compliant chargers like ours. Gasoline vehicles, 60 times more likely to ignite and cause 345 deaths a year. There have been no reported deaths from EV fires in garages. You're seven more ti, seven times more likely to drown in your bathtub at your house than die from an EV fire. The, the chargers do not cause the fires. It's the batteries and only when they're damaged or malfunction. The architects designed the, the standards of this building, the highest three-hour rating, which is tougher than New Jersey's two hour, two hour standard. The NFPA 13 sprinklers and advanced ventilation erases even the faintest risk of a fire or death or collapse of the building. The borough fire officials worries about enclosed spaces, that's been fully addressed. The building's now opened. He cites references like NFPA and FSRi, but, but they don't advise against EV charging in garages. They recommend mitigation, sprinklers, ventilation, training. We've provided all of that and then more. The project delivers enhanced sprinkler density, state of the art off-gas detection and three-hour fire rating and sets a new safety benchmark in New Jersey. New Jersey firefighters can be trained. We've offered to contribute $10,000 to bring in-house training to your fire department. Reinforces Avalon's commitment to address your concerns. There's no available land around the building to put these parking spaces outside. The law does not presently permit you to relocate them off-site. The law mandates you to act on this application and follow the requirements to have EV chargers in this building. You don't have discretion. You can have concern, but we've addressed those concerns. The choice is really yours. You can, you can cling to a baseless fear or you can approve a project that has been designed to the highest standards and is state of the art and, and moves forward the initiatives of the state to provide for renewable and, and energy efficient vehicles. We would really ask you to approve this application this evening. We are open to certain conditions in case the law changes and we're happy to discuss those with you, but we don't believe that delaying this, this hearing for another expert to come in to say the same thing that we're saying. There's only so much data on this and the data is pretty clear. Insurance companies, they've established that this is a rare occurrence, much less than, than gasoline fires. And so our client's not agreeable to extending this. We are agreeable to talking about reasonable conditions in the event the law does change, which we don't anticipate in any way. This is, this is where the world is heading and it's not going to go backwards. Green energy is a very important thing in this, in this world. They're not going to go backwards on this and you have to charge these things. Think about how many cars, 30, the latest study I saw, there's nearly 70 million EV cars in existence right now and on the roads throughout the world. Think about the hours that they charge every single day and then the number of fires that are reported. 500 fires in the last 15 years. It's not a common occurrence. And to the extent, in the very remote chance that you would have a fire here, it's not caused by the chargers and we have mitigation in place to prevent loss of life, injury and catastrophic results to the building. I'm urging you to approve this application as you're required under your oath that you took to uphold the law and approve this this evening. We are open to conditions and we're happy to discuss those now in further detail. I've shared some thoughts with your solicitor as to what we would be agreeable to doing and we hope you would consider having that dialogue with us.
So what I'm hearing is you don't want the borough to bring in a professional to corroborate your professional's testimony?
Mayor, you, you, you could have done that earlier. We brought one at great cost to us and our client's not agreeable to extending this thing further.
I just wanted that on the record. That's, that's fine.
And I, I just like to make sure we're clear. Even though we're not within the 120-day time period to make a vote, you'd like us to vote tonight and not give us the opportunity to have that expert come and corroborate the report that was just provided earlier this week, you'd like to have a vote prior to the end of the 120-day period.
Is it, is it 120 days or is it 90 days?
It ends for a C-variety in connection with your application for Siders 120. It ends May 13.
Kara, can you turn on your microphone, please?
Of course.
Damn it! Say it all again.
That I heard.
Do you want to take a recess?
Yeah. I do, but my client doesn't. So if, we, we were understanding you're out of time. If you have more time, then we're not going to force a vote, but we would like to talk about the conditions that we've worked hard. In addition to all of the changes and mitigation in response to your concern, we did not take your, your concerns lightly. We were very serious about designing the best building engineering can design. And we have some conditions that I'd like to read into the record that hopefully you will consider. One of the things we heard is you think this is an emerging issue. We think it is, but it's going in our direction, not in the direction of getting rid of these things because the evidence is that they're safe and if they're properly designed and coded, there's no risk from the charging and you're not going to get rid of EV cars. So the first condition we would agree to is that if the site plan receives preliminary and final approval, then the applicant will construct required make-ready EV charging stations in accordance with applicable law. If however, prior to 120 days of the applicant's estimated issuance of the first temporary or permanent CO for the building, the currently existing charging station law is modified and the EV charging stations are no longer required for the project, or if the borough can secure a written waiver or approval from the state exempting the project from the EV charging requirements, then the applicant agrees that the EV charging stations that are make-ready will not be activated. So if you can get an approval from the state contrary to the law as it exists now, or the law should change, because you're right, these are really hazardous issues, then we would not activate these, these charging stations. We cannot get a CO unless we install them in accordance with current law. So we, we are, our hands are handcuffed. We have to do this. The second condition would be to meet an earlier concern that we heard and objectives is if in the event the above occurs prior to the deadline and charging stations are no longer required for the project and there's a requirement to install EV charging stations at a legally permissible off-site alternative location, then you can select the off-site alternative location and such event, the applicant will contribute $150,000 to the borough for the installation of any required EV charging stations and we will not be responsible for any installation for the off-site EV charging stations. Again, we'll have.
Can you repeat that one again?
So if, if, if the law changes and we've installed the EV make-ready stations, but we don't, we don't have to activate them, we will not activate them. And if you have another site where you'd like to put them, we'll contribute $150,000, which we estimate would be a little bit nexus of what these costs to install. So you can install them anywhere in town that you'd like to install.
If, in, in the absence of the law changing, however, if there were an agreement by the state to allow for a, an aggregated off-site location, not just for this, but for a number of other potential projects, would that still apply?
Yes.
I'm talking to Mr. Bruno.
Yeah, I think as, as, as long as we don't have to activate ours to get a CO, then the answer is yes.
And, and would you be amenable to, instead of putting a dollar figure in there, say, subject to, amount to be determined, negotiated?
Well, we have to have some cap. I mean, you can't come back and say 5 million. I mean, so what we, what we did is we calculated, these are, these are $4,700 each. It's, it's less than 150 and we upped it to $150,000 contribution for those.
So based on 31?
That's, that's what we did. 31 times 7,400 was 140 some thousand. We rounded it to 150.
That works for me.
Can you swear my name, please?
Yes. My client, Ron Laddell, would like to be sworn and make a statement.
Just rather the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Ronald Laddell, L-A-D-E-L-L, Senior Vice President, Avalon Bay Communities, Inc. I've been with Avalon Bay for 22 and a half years. I'm lead executive involved in running the New Jersey operation for Avalon Bay. Mayor, I just want to go back to something you said when you asked the question of my witnesses, which I thought was actually the most salient statement that was made, although I think they did a great job. I think your statement summarized it when you tried to say, have I colded correctly? I'm not sure the word cold was, when I would use it, but the way you used it was in fact, was effective. Your comment was, it seems like the real issue is the EVs, the electric vehicles, not the charging stations. That's 100% correct. And Mr. Van Horne, you said the same thing in a different way. Both of you are 100% correct. We agree with all of what you said, but as Mr. Bruno and our witnesses described, even if we did no charging stations, which we're fine to do, if the law doesn't require us to do it, every issue that we just discussed for now two and a half hours would still remain in effect. Every single one. The, the lack of fires, in our view, and maybe your concern, we certainly acknowledge, would still be in effect no matter what. Whether it's a Somerset County courthouse or a parking garage there, Jack Marvist Park Garage, or any other parking garage in Somerset without the state of New Jersey, electric vehicles will park in those garages. And if there is a fire in every other garage except mine that I want to do here, there'll be more exposure to the first responders there. Why? Because they don't have all that we're doing here. That's the story. That is the truth. These conditions came up from a combination of, and I'm just going to evoke a dang Ralph Zucker, Mike Bruno and myself over the last 48 hours. Although I wasn't here at the first meeting and I probably was missing it, it seemed to me, as reported back to me, there was an interest in the town of Somerville, Borough Somerville, excuse me, to potentially have, as you just indicated, Mayor, an aggregate location for EV charging stations. I'm not running Somerville. If all of you think it's appropriate to do that, we want to support you to do that. We're going to pay and contribute with regard to do that if we can get there. If the state will allow us to do that with your assistance, if we'll work together with your solicitor, anyone else you want us to work together to change it, we'll do that too and we'll cover the cost with regard to that. We actually think it's about 4,200 because I added the power to it, so you're probably getting a few more vig dollars with regard to that. Having said all that, and very, very respectfully, to wait for the next planning board meeting, which may be in two weeks or a month, I've no idea what your agenda is, by the way, I don't know if we can even get on the next meeting, I really don't want to do. The pretty picture, and I thank you for your compliment, Mayor, that we have up there, we've already spent over a million dollars on this project. Why do we spend so much so early? Because we like Somerville. We like being here. We've been very successful here. We have 100% with a minor sign variance of leave conforming application. We have an RDA done. We have our pilot done. This is, we're building about 100 less units than we're allowed to build. I'm not sure you even knew that. We could actually build more than 100 more units than we're even asking for. We didn't seek that. We designed a project we think fits appropriately, conforms with your redevelopment plan, which acts as zoning in the way it works in New Jersey, and we're eager, very eager, to get started. We can get this project started this calendar year. It will employ 175-plus people on a regular basis. 65 million? Close to $70 billion will be spent by us on this project. Think about the permit fees, the sales taxes generated, the income taxes generated, the shot in the arm for not only Somerville, but for this county and for the state of New Jersey. And I want to start that this calendar year. If I get delayed, with all due respect, I don't know that I can make it. I ultimately think you're going to make the right decision and approve this application for all the reasons that Mr. Bruno and our witnesses described tonight. But a further delay, again respectfully, that I think will add nothing to it. I'm upset that your fire chief is not here. I'm upset, I've never met him, that he wrote that you should deny this application respectfully, but then he, without any basis.
Fire official, not the chief.
Sorry, fire official. I wish he was here to have that conversation, but he chose not to. That is your expert. He wrote a report, I don't think on any basis on it, and I don't know what his baby had a, a, couldn't make it tonight. I don't want to assume anything, but I asked for him to be here because I wanted to ask him the questions, why he concluded it. So here's where we're at. I'm respectfully making a request. I'd like you to vote tonight. I'd like you to accept these conditions and Kara, we gave, she doesn't have a copy, we have an extra copy.
I have it.
Good. She can read them and do whatever she wants with regard to it. Someone has to, of course, make a motion and second it, but I don't think waiting, and I don't, I don't know your schedule, two weeks or four weeks or beyond is going to change anything. We tried these conditions because all of you said there was another option. The state law doesn't allow it today, but if you can get a change, we're behind you. We'll support you. We want to get this done. But you may not think a month is a big deal. It is. I can't believe I'm back here again. Some of you were around when we got our first approval. I made a bet with Ralph Zucker that I lost. Ralph said to me, we're going to get approved in one meeting, and I said, no, we're not. Doesn't happen anywhere. It happened in Somerville. I read the articles about Somerville. The way you've structured the town with regard to development, and I'll give you credit because you deserve it.
Thank you.
Works well.
Don't do that.
I'm sorry. I'll, I'll negotiate a salary next time, but you know, you are, and take this as a compliment, a developer-friendly town. You understand what your residents want, what they need for both a residential and commercial perspective. We love being a part of that. We want to expand our opportunity with regard to that. I'm here to answer any other questions you have. It'll stop right now, but if you're acceptable, I offered these conditions, the $10,000 is offered too, and I don't know what other conditions may have occurred. Kara, if we get that far, I can read them to all of you. But I'd like you to vote tonight. I'd like you to vote in favor of this application, submit these conditions. Let's continue to work together on this and the rest of the project. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Madam Chair.
Can you, can you repeat the conditions? Well, Mr. Bruno, if Mr. Bruno can repeat the conditions again.
And let's, let's listen very carefully because, and I, if you don't mind my interrupting, because I don't, you know, listen, ultimately, it is of course your decision. The only thing I'll say is the conditions are going to be the conditions as worded and we all know how important it is to craft conditions in such a manner where they are withstanding longevity and represent what both parties understand. Since this is so important, you know, we, we need to make sure that they're correct. And I don't like doing things at the last minute. I'll work and, again, do whatever you want to do. The only other option that I will throw out there is typically, we do preliminary and final separately. I know that they are asking for preliminary and final tonight, at least according to the conditions as they're drafted. The only other suggestion, if the board is so inclined to go that route, could be to put on the record the conditions in theory, as we're outlining them for preliminary, take the two weeks to craft specifics and incorporate them into a final. Again, I think we're all trying to work together here and throw everything on the table that's possible, so just another thought, but go ahead with your condition.
Yeah, and, and just so you're aware, one of, the, the board has taken the position that we don't give preliminary and final. It's not a reaction to, to your, to your conditions. It's just the, the policy of the board. We have, other applications have requested both preliminary and final at the same time and we have denied that. So I, I think a little flexibility on, at least in terms of when you read this again for the board to evaluate doing the preliminary and then the final at the next meeting.
Mayor, I will say, and not to be argumentative on that point.
Then don't.
We did understand, we, we did understand that the reason you did that is because there's oftentimes many conditions that are unsatisfied and you want to see them. We took the opportunity between the last meeting. between the last meeting and this meeting, uh, to submit fully revised plans to address each and every condition that was raised. There's a couple technical conditions that your engineers raised. We've stipulated tonight that we'll comply with those. So we would respectfully ask for preliminary and final. I get you, your policy, and you're going to do what you want to do, and preliminary is better than nothing. Sorry, Ron.
No, no, you're good. Keep going. You're fine.
But, uh, that, 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 that's why we submitted everything. We, we really worked hard to get that whole package into you. And but for the fire officials urging of Friday, I wouldn't have had to send a legal memorandum. That ruined my weekend and caused me to have to submit that because it was totally out of character with what I've seen in my thirty-five years of practice, the urging of a denial of a, of a, of an application that's fully conforming and mandated by state law, and not having the opportunity to cross him. So we did that at a legal necessity, not because we're looking to challenge anybody. We've been in this town a long time. We respect everything you guys do. We're just, we're doing our jobs too. So that was the reason that was sent. It wasn't sent that of any other, any other reason. So let me, let me read the conditions one more time. And I, and I think I gave you a written verbatim copy of these. So I'll do my best to read and get it correct.
I'll let you know if you're wrong.
Number one, if the site plan application receives preliminary and final approval, put the bracket around final, then the applicant shall construct the required make-ready EV charging stations in accordance with applicable law. However, if prior to one hundred and twenty days of the applicant's estimated issuance of either the first temporary or permanent CBO for the building, the currently existing EV charging station law is modified and EV charging stations are no longer required for the project, or if the Borough of Somerville secures a written waiver or approval exempting this project from EV charging station requirements, then the applicant agrees that the EV charging stations will not be activated. So we're going to build them, but not activate them if the law changes or you get a waiver. Two.
And the law would be changed to not require them, not allow them to be, specifically allow them to be located off-site?
Correct. That's number two.
Correct. That's what that, okay.
So that's number one. Number two says, if A or B of the above, that's either they, they're no longer required, uh, or you get the waiver, prior to the deadline, which is the hundred and twenty days before the CO is issued. And we need time to activate these. That's why we have a deadline there. And, and we're a couple of years off from being at that CO point anyway. Um, if the charging stations are no longer required for the project, and there's a requirement to install EV charging stations as a legally permissible off-site alternative location, then the Borough of Somerville shall select such off-site alternative location. In such event, the applicant will contribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Borough of Somerville for the installation of the required EV charging stations, but the applicant shall not be responsible for any installation work related to the EV charging stations. Further, the applicant in such case agrees not to activate the EV charging stations located at the project. If neither one or two occurs, then the applicant agrees to comply with the EV charging station law as applicable in terms of bringing them on, uh, making them active versus ready. So law requires, requires the thirty-one spaces. It requires a third be brought on every two years. So we would comply with that. We wouldn't make them all upfront ready in case something happens after year two.
You're referring to the phasing with the law?
The phasing. We'll comply with the phasing. So those are the conditions. Um, and I think I shared pretty much the exact wording with, with Kara.
So that's, so number two is if charging stations are no longer required, so the current law changes, but the current law is amended to require stations off-site, then we can work together to select a site. Option two would not apply, I'm trying to think of how to say this. Option two isn't that the applicant and the borough will work together to find another off-site location that would work. That's only if it's not required onsite, but it is required off-site, then we'll find an off-site location.
Yeah, and you guys can find it.
Yeah, we're not involved in that. You decide where it is. We're not, like I said, I don't run Somerville. All of you do. Tell us where you want it. We'll write a check.
I understand that. So.
Do you want to, and again, just in the interest of everybody working together here, um, do we want to do a straw poll as to who feels that they want to hire an expert?
My, my, here's, here's where I'm at, because I think the applicant is saying at this point, let's go. Um, I think there's been a lot of testimony over the last two meetings. Um, I think the testimony that was provided tonight was extremely comprehensive. I've said that before. Um, I think the clarification that the issue is really the vehicle, and it's not the charging, where I think we were kind of locked on the charging initially, um, has been, has been clarified. Um, one of the, um, one of the, uh, contentions I had after the last meeting, uh, was, you know, it, it, from a, from a develop, a statewide development perspective, it makes so much more sense. What we're doing here, what the state's doing here, is bringing gas stations to every vehicle, for lack of a better term. And it makes no sense. So, you know, I, I left last meeting and, and I drove around town a little bit, and I said, you know, doesn't it make more sense to have a, a located area where folks from different developments can come, charge their vehicles, and it's centrally located? There's one power source coming in. It's not going into multiple, because PS can't, you know, they're having trouble, you know, fixing phone, fixing, uh, power lines as it is. Um, or even getting enough juice. Um, so, so the idea of creating a centralized location, to me, is very appealing. I like the idea of going after the state to get them to understand a better idea. Colin and I have done that for twenty years, and, and we've had a lot of success at it. And I see the potential for success in this as well, because I think it's, it's smart planning. It's doing this on an individualized ad hoc basis every time somebody comes in. Um, it's not the right way to plan. And, and this body plans for the future. So let's, let's do that, and let's try to plan for the future. And let this one, let's, let's start with this one. Um, we've identified a couple of potential locations already. They're willing to help fund that centralized location. It doesn't have to be all at once, but it can be, you know, over time, it can be a slow build-out. And as each developer comes in, they then have the ability to kick in and provide for their requirement. Um, it also allows people to participate in our downtown. Charge your vehicle and go have dinner. That's, that's, that's great planning. It's smart planning. Um, is it the most ideal? Probably not, but I think, given all of the testimony that we've heard, um, I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, accepting the conditions and, uh, and, and then going to work and trying to find a, uh, a location that satisfies not just this demand, but our future demands, because they're coming. They're coming. So. Anybody?
Anybody else on the board?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
You go.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand the mayor's point, um, and everything you guys have said. And, and obviously, I do have significant concerns, everybody does, with, you know, it's new. Um, personally, you know, I, I would like to hear another testimony. We got this Monday. I'm missing some of those pages, it appears. Um, your testimony was great. It was very thorough. Assuming that that is all a hundred percent correct, and those statistics and everything else, then, then, and you're correct that, you know, there's really no significant concern, because that is not what I've heard over, you know, the last multiple years of everything I've heard about EVs. Um, if we're not going to get another testimony to come in and, you know, collaborate it, deny whatever, then we have to take you at that word, um, I just really hope at that point that you guys are one hundred percent correct. And there is no, Lee, when I'm reading a research foundation thing here, that talks about fires with EVs in garages that melted the sprinkler heads above it. Um, so hearing that there's no concern at all from anybody, it, it makes me nervous. I wish there was another testimony. Um, but I do understand that you guys are experts, and thank you for the testimony you guys gave.
Larry, you have something?
Yes. Um, I agree exactly what Jason was saying, is that you guys did very well in explaining it, but we're just taking it just by your say-so, just because you said so, just because he said so. Well, how about give us two weeks to get somebody to come out and, and give us an opinion that he can look at it and go from there. Two or three weeks is not going to kill you, is it?
Is that a question?
Well, it was more of a rhetorical question. He, he answered the question by shaking his head. No, it's not going to kill you. Two or three weeks for us to get to the next meeting, so we can get an expert that's on, that, that's independent, because we have the opinion of our fire official who works for us, who, we trust him. He's one of our guys. So for us to just flat out go against him without having additional information, maybe not, it may not be the way to go, in my opinion. I would rather have additional testimony, and if it all backs up exactly what you guys said, then okay, and it's going to be safe, and nobody's going to get hurt, go ahead. Then we're fine.
The testimony was, they didn't say it's going to be safe and nobody's going to get hurt. That's not what their testimony was. And let me just add a little further. Your fire chief's report, which I think was completely-
Please correct that. It's the fire official.
Your fire, what's his first name?
Nope, nope.
Your fire official, who's not here, who I respectfully think none of what he should have submitted should even be part of the record. He has to be available for cross-examination. He's not here. I'm not even going down that road. All right, let's forget that. But if you take what he said is true, his issue is about electric vehicles, not about charging stations. Everything about this topic is charging stations, as I said earlier, as these two said earlier. Even if we got rid of every charging station, electric vehicles are going to be in this garage, and they're already in all your garages in Somerville. That's not going to change. What is another witness going to add to that? Electric vehicles are still coming in. Unless you're banning electric vehicles in Somerville, which you're not, the fear you've described, the bolt that you've described, is related to electric vehicles. That's it.
I was always told or heard that the most, the riskiest part of the EVs is when they're charging. This is what I heard a couple of weeks ago.
There's no, there's no evidence of that.
There's nothing.
But this is what we want to get down.
You, you had a fight, you, you asked a question earlier. Where's page thirty-three? That was your own fire chief. In fact, the one video he attached was in Madrid. If you looked at it, I did.
I, we, we didn't get this until today, so didn't get a chance.
I can't speak to that. That's-
Well, your letter came out on, on the seventh, so.
But the, the, the reason is-
This is all rushed, unnecessarily rushed.
Well, I disagree with that, for the record. And it's your fire chief who took so long. We met with the fire chief, I'll look around, more than ten days ago. Okay? Fire official. More than ten days ago. He, he gave you a video, I know you haven't seen it, of a garage fire, a car fire in a garage underground in Madrid. Nothing about charging, didn't talk about sprinklers, and it was in Spanish, by the way, which is kind of interesting, because I didn't really understand it. I did a little research on it. My point is, everything he submitted had nothing to do with this testimony. And everything that's being discussed tonight on this side of the dais is about electric vehicles, not about charging stations. What is two or four weeks going to add to that? It's not about the charging station.
This is a leap of faith for us to just trust what you guys said as verbatim. I hear what you're saying, but two weeks is not going to kill you.
Kara, I'd like the straw poll to be done, and then I'll make a decision about the offer.
I, I would, I would note that your fire official doesn't cite any sources. The sources that he cites are contrary to his conclusion. They, they recommend mitigation. So if, if he had cited some sources, we could, we could address those. I mean, all of the sources we found, the insurance companies, the risk of the fire resulting from the charger is less than five percent, and that's old chargers, people using extension cords. The, the code-related, the code-certified chargers are virtually no impact, right? So it's, it's, Mr. Laddell is right. It's, it's the EVs that you're worried about, and those are very rare. But when they do happen, they're hot. And you heard the testimony that they do happen, and this building will not collapse. So there's really nothing more, uh, anybody can add. Uh, there's no, there's no reports out there. You, you know, in the world today, you could, you could investigate this very quickly.
Oh, certainly. Well, I agree.
And, uh, find out every reported case, because I did it. Every reported case in, in, in this country and throughout the world, the insurance companies' reports on how often this happens, and if they're increasing premiums and so forth because of the, the risk. The risk is negligible. And then when it does happen, it's because of a collision, environmental factors, just like a hurricane, or salt water, or storm, or malfunctioning batteries, which are, is kind of an older risk. You know, the volt, that we heard, we all heard about those recalls. The newer batteries are, are improved and much less likely to have defects. But again, it's not the charger. It's the battery that creates the issue, the thermal runaway in the battery, not the charger itself.
Okay. Kara, where do we stand as of right now?
Um, okay, let's take the, I want to say the easy part, but, um, as far as timing, statutory timing, um, we have until May thirteenth, a hundred and twenty days to act. We have a meeting April twenty-third. Our next meeting is not till April fourteenth, which is the day after. What did I say? April?
Yeah, you said April, sorry.
May, May fourteenth. Um, we can decide to hire an expert if that is what the board, board's preference is. Um, if the applicant would like us to make a vote tonight, tonight, and deny that.
One second.
Um, despite the fact that we do have time, and despite the fact that there was a very short period of time for the board to look at this and have that opportunity, then that's certainly in their ability to make that ask and have the board do that. And the board will vote how the board votes. Um, but on its own, from a statutory perspective, the board is not under any time restriction to vote tonight.
So our two options are, at this point, one, we vote to have an expert brought in. The other one is-
Or not.
Or not.
If someone makes a motion to, yeah.
Yes. But the motion would go forth with, and the other motion could be with the conditions, approval with those conditions that are set forth as of right now.
Yes. And the only thing that I would suggest is that the general conditions, if that's the way it's going to go, be as placed on the record with specific, if we need to tweak something here, like-
Between preliminary and final, yeah.
So for instance, like, one of the things that I, I would like to say is that the intention of these conditions is to be compliant with the state EV requirements, not to circumvent to comply. We're look, we're just leaving some flexibility in the event that something does change. Um, there's also a number of other conditions in here that I would have to put on the record if we do that. Um, but that's the only reason that I say that, just so we have that ability to make these conditions, which are part and parcel of the reasons why the board would be okay with voting tonight, be as correct as possible.
Chairman, there, there is a important member of the public, the original mastery developer of the site, would like to say something to the board about this application. Yeah, you can be sworn in.
Yeah, I don't think you were the first time, right?
No, he's not, he's not an expert. He's just a representative. No, he's not, he's not an expert, he's just a representative of Summers- this is Ken Gold.
Gee, thanks for bringing that up, Mike.
Representative of Somerset Development. Sometimes expert.
Yeah.
But not in his capacity to deceive me.
Ken, you swear the testimony you're about to give us, boards the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Uh, my name is Ken Gold, uh, Senior Vice President of Acquisition Development at Somerset Development. Um, you all have known me for a very long time. Um, Ralph Zucker is the principal and owner of Somerset Development. Um, he is unfortunately not available, available to be here tonight. Um, he's in Israel with his family for the Passover holiday, uh, and he had prepared this statement, uh, and he'd like me to read it.
So Ken, this, this is your comments with regard to the application? The only reason I'm asking is-
Your company's comments.
Okay, yeah, let's couch it that way, because typically we don't allow someone to just submit something, so you're going to have to be prepared to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to this.
Happy to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Honorable Mayor, Mayor of the Somerville Planning Board. Uh, I sit here before you tonight, uh, as an applicant, but not as a stranger. Uh, we've known each other, uh, my company, Inspired by Somerset Development, and the people of Somerville since two thousand and eight. We first responded to an RFP put out by you and New Jersey Transit in an effort to revive the then twenty-year-old plan to redevelop the train station parking lot, the green seam, and the entire landfill area to bring it to life. That was nineteen eighty-eight that you guys first start, started to try to redevelop the, the site. Since that time, we've worked together, long, hard, sometimes difficult, and many times rewarding years. We've worked together with integrity, with purpose, and with resolve. We've overcome many, many obstacles along the way. The plan that we jointly developed and the beautiful Somerville Station project that was a world-class transit-oriented development is a result of our combined efforts, along with Avalon Bay and Pulte Homes. We've created a incredible community here, one that we can be proud of. And we all sacrificed, we all gave in, we all compromised, but we worked together. I remember when the two thousand and six extension, uh, Route two oh six extension was deemed an absolute necessity, and how much we labored, and yes, how much we contributed financially to make that happen, and it's built today. I was in the meeting with Colin when, when that deal was, was finally agreed to. It was one of the highlights of my career personally. We stand here before you tonight as an applicant, but again, not as a stranger, as partners, as developers who hopefully have earned your, and deserve your trust. And we deserve the benefit of the bargain that we struck many years ago. Inspired by Somerset Development, Avalon Bay, and Pulte Homes have all kept their end of the bargain. We have done what we said we were going to do, and as a matter of fact, the very room we are sitting in now was contributed to the people of Somerville as a result of our collective efforts. So we stand here before, I stand here before you tonight again as an applicant, but not as a stranger. We deserve to be heard. We understand there are concerns. Nobody wants to endanger anybody, not even developers. However, we live in a world full of dangers. Every time you turn on your stove to cook a pot of soup, there's danger. Every time you cross the street, there's danger. Every time you step off a curb, there's danger. Every time you board a plane or you go to a doctor, there's danger. But we don't shut those things down. We don't outlaw airplanes. We don't outlaw cooking. We don't outlaw driving, and we haven't outlawed electric vehicles. Would the world be a safer place if we did absolutely nothing but sit in our chairs and not move at all? Maybe, maybe not. But then you would not have places like Somerville Station, the place that we built together. I remember how hard we worked on the bike path to provide, to provide connectivity along the Green Seam Trail. Biking is dangerous. People die in biking accidents all the time, but we don't outlaw biking. We say, wear a helmet, observe the rules, and go about your life. We're asking you tonight, I am asking you tonight, to keep your end of the bargain. We've worked together, you've pushed us, and your concerns have been addressed, and the Avalon Bay plans submitted here tonight are the cutting-edge safety and EV charging station in a garage anywhere. We've also offered compromises that if these are not required by law, if the law changes or we can put them somewhere else in the borough and we would be acceptable to the state, we have agreed to that you've, what you've heard tonight. We've said, we'll, we'll work with you to, to put them off-site. You've done your job. You've made it much safer. Now we ask you to do your duty and approve this application. This is what we bargained for, this was our deal. This, these are the amount of units we are allowed to get under the redevelopment agreement, and we're asking you to do what we did. We kept our word, we kept our commitment, please do the same. I trust you'll do the right thing. Thanks very much, Ralph Zucker. Ken Gold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was told there would be questions.
I don't know.
Not, anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have to at this point. So we're going to have to poll.
Preliminary, straw poll for preliminary with conditions first?
Yep.
Raise your hand.
Preliminary, voting for preliminary tonight with those conditions as part of the approval. Those conditions will be finalized and fine-tuned for final site plan approval at the next meeting.
And I have a number of other conditions that I can put on the record.
Well, let's, let's, this is a straw poll.
This is just a straw poll right now to see if this is the direction they're going to go in.
So this is not getting an expert?
Yeah, why don't we do a straw poll for that?
This is, this is taking the vote. Um, it's just a straw poll to, to, first to say preliminary approval tonight with the conditions outlined by Mr. Bruno, and, and then ultimately to be outlined by Kara, with the others.
But she just said we should do the straw poll for, do we need the expert or not? If we don't need the expert, then that's all.
We're doing both, we're doing both straw polls.
All right, good, we'll do both.
Yeah, so straw poll for-
So if we agree to the preliminary, that's the first one. The second vote would be if we agree for us getting an expert.
One or the other.
It's one or the other.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out, so you agree to one, you can't agree to the other.
Right.
Right.
That's why I want to find out if we want to get-
Okay, we will start with who is in-
Well, it makes a difference. You said it makes a difference, and it does.
All right.
I like this project. I just think that we can do it the right way. The implication that we're going against-
Well, I would say it differently, Larry, not the right way. There's differences in opinion.
All right, we're going to do a vote.
But to make it seamless.
Larry, Larry, we're just going to do the straw poll vote.
Okay.
How many would like to have wait and bring in an expert testimony? Okay, next poll. How many are willing to vote for preliminary approval tonight with conditions which will be fine-tuned and clarified for final site plan approval at the next meeting? Can you go over the conditions, please?
I will try. All right. Um, let's keep the conditions that Mike put on the record separate right now. We understand that those are the general conditions, they will be-
Did you make sure she gets the language you have, Mike?
I have, no, I have it.
No, she has, she has.
I'm just saying, like, again.
Yeah, you'll have to reset.
Yeah, I, I have it, but I just want to make sure we look at every word properly, like we do with the other conditions, because typically I would just throw them on the record, so everyone understands, and then we'd fine-tune it after the fact. Um, compliance with the commentary and, and requirements of CHA's reports, all of our standard conditions. The applicant returns to the board for final site plan approval, subject to the finalization of the conditions placed on the record tonight by applicant's counsel. All right, here's where we're going to get crazy for the last one. Um, now, if these conditions were already satisfied by the amended plan, let me know, so I'll put it on the record and we can say that they were satisfied. Um, lighting in the rear on the road, to be gated for transit only. Put up plans against the railroad and allow for borough, lighting in the rear, lighting on the roadway in the rear? Is that ringing a bell somewhere?
Around the back of the building.
Yeah, by the tracks.
Yeah.
By the tracks.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Um, the plans reflect currently three hundred and four street trees, it should reflect two hundred and four. Uh, the plans amended as per, that's what we talked about already. Uh, compliance with the redevelopment plan and agreement. Um, relief to be granted from the loading requirements of the redevelopment plan if and as necessary, as noted in number seven of the CHA report. Uh, applicant will add an onsite common area generator at the back of the, and come back at final with details. The applicant to work- I have the applicant to work, now this may have been changed by virtue of everything we've talked about. Applicant to work with the borough to discuss operational and actual, actual use of on-street parking and adjust as necessary, a transition plan.
That's, that's, that's the condition, because we've agreed when we transition the, the roads to the borough, we'll work with you.
Yes, yes.
By the way, all of these have either been satisfied, which we believe, or will be satisfied.
You've agreed to satisfy.
Nothing's objectionable. I think we did satisfy, but to the extent one fell through the cracks.
Okay.
Your engineer found any, we're, we're agreeable.
Okay. Um, the applicant shall increase the tree size of the thirteen street trees to two and a half to three-inch caliper trees and work towards the three-inch size, matching what is on Robeson Street. Mechanicals shall be screened from view. Uh, project will be Gold Lead certified, Energy Star compliant. The, pursuant to the engineer's letter, two spaces near the wall will be reduced to eight and a half by eighteen. That's item six E of your letter, does that sound right? Compliance, obviously, with all additional, um, proposals incorporated in the amended site plan that was provided. Ten thousand dollar contribution, that was in the conditions. I think that's all I had otherwise, and obviously the relief that was granted with regard to the, uh, the signage as well, the two signs as opposed to the one.
Okay, I'm going to put a motion forth for approval.
Did I miss anything? Anybody?
No, I, I think all the conditions that you raised and, and we, we, and the engineer's conditions, we believe we've satisfied, to the extent we haven't, we will satisfy.
Okay.
Okay, the motion is put forth for approval with said conditions.
I'll second.
This is, and let me clarify, this is preliminary, uh, site plan approval.
And the variance, deviations, exceptions that are noted from the redevelopment.
Yes.
I'll second. Lisa.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Epstein.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
No.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes.
Thank you, members of the Somerville Planning Board, appreciate it very much.
Thank you for investing in Somerville.
We do, I just have one question I don't think, when is the next meeting? So I just-
Twenty-third, April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third? Correct.
Yeah, yeah, don't, don't go running out yet, guys.
Not done yet.
Yeah, let's do, you know what?
Two minutes.
Well, yeah, two-minute recess. Yeah, I gotta go. Yes, can I help?
Remember, the mics are still on and the recording is still going.
I'll turn the mics off first. Folks, we still have a meeting going on, so if you could, uh, exit quietly?
We did have the opportunity, we did open it up to the public. Oh, no, no, it is, it is. Yeah, uh, well, I know, that's the problem. I mean, we did open it up to the public, and that's why- Mike, can you come here for a second?
Kara, your mic's still on.
We're missing Larry still.
Yeah, we're going to wait a minute.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I killed your mics, sorry.
Just in the, in the interest of fairness for these two residents, we're going to, um, I know we voted and, and we're just going to reopen the public portion, it's a little out of order, but we do want to give you the opportunity to be able to have the applicant hear what it is that, that your concerns are. Um, so if you could, all we need is you to state your name and give your address, please.
All right, my name is Michael Mupo, I'm the owner of ninety-one Robeson Street in Somerville. And our issue is about parking. I mean, there's a crisis, a parking crisis in this particular area. At any given time, there's probably forty cars that are parked illegally because there's not enough space. Now, if we're going to add additional units to this area and an additional construction site, I'd like to see the plan of how we're going to handle all these other problems with, associated with parking, especially on this particular street. Are we going to now eliminate twenty parking spots across the front that we're already forty shy, we're already forty parking spots shy? So if you were to properly plan this project, we would never have had it, an additional, well, all these projects, we would never have all these houses without this additional parking. If you're telling me that a hundred and seventy units are going to fill up a hundred and seventy parking spots, and that's it, I find it very hard to believe. I think that everybody understands this is not downtown Manhattan. People, people in New Jersey have cars, every, everybody has a car. And there's multiple cars for these, these apartments, I'm assuming there're more, there's one, two-bedroom apartments, maybe three-bedroom apartments, I don't know. But there's going to be more than one car associated with each one. Now the, now the woman told me, well, we have sixty percent more capacity in another particular parking deck down the road. Well, we still have forty cars that are, that are parked incorrectly here now. So we have to come up with a plan. I don't care what the plan is, whether it's open up, let us, let us park in their parking lot if they have sixty percent capacity extra, or assigned parking, like, you know, they have to, you have to control this parking dilemma. This is, this is catastrophe. Every weekend, there's people parking sideways, or people parking on the side streets, there's people parking on, close to the curb, close to the fire hydrants, and there's people getting tickets for this. We need to, we need to do something to correct this. I mean, I could, I could develop a plan myself and easily solve part of the problem, but it's, it's, there's just too many units for too, for too little, for too little parking.
We, we, and thank you for your comments. Are you okay with me taking this chair?
I am absolutely.
So, so your comments don't go unnoticed. Um, we've had a number of, uh, people at our council meetings, this is a planning board meeting, but we've had a number of folks, uh, from this area, um, from this neighborhood on, at our council meetings with the very same issue.
with the very same issue. And the challenge right now is that the borough does not own these roads. They will, we will, at some point. This is something that Mr. Vroom and I have dealt with at the council table. And what we've said is, when the borough does take control of the roads, at a point yet to be determined, the roads will be dedicated back to the borough. The borough will then take control of the roads, and the borough will implement a parking plan. It will most likely include permit parking, but at this point, we don't control, so we don't exercise authority over the roads. We cannot enforce parking in this complex, not until we own the roads. I can't tell you when that's going to happen, but I can tell you we're getting closer to it at this point. Once we do, we will implement a parking management plan. And at this point, that's the best I can do. Having said that, what I can say is, talk to your homeowner, are you part of the homeowners' association?
Sure, sure.
Talk to the homeowners' association.
Well, they're the ones who sent me here today.
Well, see if they can't implement with the property owner a parking management permit structure, at least until the borough takes control. That may be your best alternative. But until the borough takes control, there's nothing we can do about it. We don't, we do not enforce these roads. It's private property right now.
No, I understand the idea of private property, so what do we have to do to get it committed to Somerville and before this happens? So we can start to get this thing settled right away?
It's a good, fair question, and it's nothing that you can do. This actually takes a very large step to having that happen. The borough did not want to take the roads until the construction is complete, because we want to ensure that when the roads are turned over, that they're in good shape. We don't want to take roads that are damaged by construction vehicles that immediately need repair. So when we take control of the roads, the owner will ensure that the roads are in good shape for the borough to take control. This approval, or at least preliminary approval tonight, gives a very large step to that happening. It's a discussion we know is on the table, that we have to have with the developer, who is the property owner right now. I can't give you a timeline right now.
But isn't the developer who is developing the property responsible for the roads? So if the road is not in great shape, they have to, in order, you hold all the permitting and all that stuff, so you could control whether they fix whatever they break along the way? I mean, I've seen it happen many times, the developer builds the roads, they put in temporary roads, they put in the final road when the whole thing's done, and they get the CO. You hold the CO, if they don't give you the CO, the road's not done, then you can't, they can't start their jobs.
Well, and these are conversations we have had with your neighbors as well, and we've had the same conversation and said, you know, maybe the homeowners' association should implement a parking permit structure right now.
But what's the teeth behind that structure? So right now...
It's private property, you can tow.
You can tow, all right. I'll bring it back to the society, but there's a problem here, because what you're allowing to happen now is...
The borough's not allowing anything to happen.
No, you're allowing this construction that'll now eliminate a bunch more parking.
This is private property. I can't tell people what to do on their own property, that's their property.
All right.
It's private property right now. When it turns over to the borough, I, yeah...
And this board itself, unfortunately, we have no purview of any of that. So, you know, really, there's not much, there's no options for us with you, but to the mayor's point, it is private property, so even the borough council itself doesn't have the purview over those roads, unfortunately.
All right, well, that's too bad, that, you know, I'm involved with several other towns, and, you know, they wouldn't let this happen to their homeowners, and it's devaluing the properties, especially if you're now, you have a property that's going to be under construction for two years with 20 less parking spots and construction going on. There should be a plan on how people manage that part of it. So they should have some, you know, calling off of areas so that they don't interrupt the commerce of the town that's already in operation, right? So I don't see that happening here, but hopefully it will happen. And maybe, you know, maybe we can work out a deal with these people to use some of their parking, because they have such an excess here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for staying.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. Yes, I'm sorry, closing public, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, so unless there's no objections, I have no comments, and I think we can move all pending business items to just next meeting, and I put a motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Oh, all opposed?
Nope, I think they're good.
No, we just did aye and no.
We're good.
We're done.